Board of the Jim Tenth, Two Thousand Twenty One, Special Board of Alderman Meeting, please join me in the presence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go call for the floor, please.
Alderman Ross.
Here.
Alderman Walker.
I'm here.
Alderman Becker.
Here.
Alderman Rucker.
Here.
Alderman Meroz.
Here.
Alderman Osteen.
Here.
Mayor Aubrey.
Here.
Alderman, come back here. Okay, got you all, sorry.
I mean, there is no one who should be on the record this afternoon. And before we get started, I just kind of want to thank the management team for their time this afternoon to provide the board with updates and information on their individual requirements. While this is a new portion of our strategic planning, I believe you can add greatly to the value of the process, assisting us in the ongoing planning and also in preparation for this year's upcoming budget process. So at this point, I turn the video over to the City Clerk.
Okay, I am going to use the microphone. And I, we've got a new sound system, and because we've committed to recording public meetings, that's why our importance is to record. Obviously, we all need to hear here in the building, but the video is recording, so we do get some comments if people are watching it when they can't hear. So I apologize, we will have more mics coming, we've still got a few more upgrades, so those staff members that will be speaking will have this mic, and if we can pass around the other two, I'd appreciate it, and I'm sure those that would watch it later or online will appreciate that as well. So I really don't have anything other than just to open it up, there's a few presentations that I'mma help the departments, and then I will close it up. I didn't really do a report, because I report to you guys a lot on all the financials and stuff, so you, I know my name is on the last, but it will be very short and sweet. So we're just going to start with the City Clerk, we've got a list here, and...
All right, I'm gonna set the bar really high, because this is going to be really fast, because I don't have a whole lot. So, in the City Clerk's office, we have one and a half employees, myself full-time, we have Brenda, who is, she's half out of City Clerk and half out of Treasury, she does all of the accounts receivable, she takes in and puts in all the utility billings, all of that, she puts in all the money for the business licenses, liquor licenses, and contractors licenses, and then we also have Annie, who is our municipal court clerk. She's amazing, they're both amazing, I'm very lucky to have a great staff like that. I'm gonna tell you just a little bit about what we processed last year, business licenses-wise. From January 1st of this year till just yesterday, we've processed 462 business licenses, 151 contractors, there's pending 62 liquor licenses we're doing, and four taxis. And then in comparison to last year, from January 1st to December 31, we did a total of 1,105 licenses altogether, 546 businesses, 470 contractors, nine dog tags, 68 liquor, and three taxis. Other than that, we're trying, my goals for next year is to make sure that we get all of our applications online. Right now, they're all online, they're PDF fillable, except that it's a little difficult, they have to download it, sign it, and then send us back the paperwork that they need. For example, contractors send us their insurance certificates, business licenses send their no-tax due letters, so I really want to make sure that we get a system together that will, they can just do it all online, they pay online, it's worked out great, they go to Easy Pay right now, that shoots us an email, we process, we send it out, it's working great, less paper, less mail that's going out. I want to try and get all the licenses eventually to make them all, send them by email to them instead of mailing them hard copies, there's really no reason, I can stamp and seal it and scan and send it and be done with it and save on postage, but that's my goals for next year. I also have the girls gonna work on some customer service videos, there's some training, I know that Cindy and Angel have set up a Neogov for them, so they're gonna work on some of those as well. Other than that, that's pretty much the City Clerk's office unless anybody's got any questions. All right, go ahead.
Where are we at with the ordinances? Well, up to date, again, online, up to date, and processed.
Okay, we got, I've got them up to date, I got all these ordinances in and up to date sent to municode, I'm waiting for them to come back. I will be sending out, the second set is coming in at the end of June, then I'll do a mass email for everybody to send me back in their code books, and then it'll be up to date as of last year, and then we'll wait until the end of the year for the new codifications for the new ordinances that are, that have been up to date this year.
How far are they behind, how far are they behind being updated in the website? When we recruit ordinances, June 1st, how long before we appear to the website?
They only do it twice a year, but all the ordinances will be on, are on, we can, are on the website, they're just not in the code book portion, but they only codify twice a year.
Turning to the minutes.
I believe it's January and June. Yeah, so they'd send it in for everything that I've sent in, yeah, they just...
Did you ever see them put that information in the, somewhere in the website? Because on the website, when you go look there, you don't really know.
It's not really live.
Right.
Right, tell them to look on that, yeah, we can probably get a little note put in there that says, you know, for updated ordinances, yep, we'll get those in, and the minutes are going to be put on the website as well, I'm in the process of working on that. One other thing is Brenda is getting ready to go out, I know, I know most of you know, on Monday she'll be gone for about six weeks, hopefully less, she's donating a kidney to her son, so we'll be down to just myself and Annie in the Clerk's office for about six weeks, so if you have any, anything you need or whatever, it'll just be me, but I'll be here, so. Richard, you had a question?
Call three, mine.
Sure.
Not sure actually, you meant, you said that they, the code would be online, but they're not in the codes section?
Yep, they're, the ordinances are posted on the website, but the codifications to go into the code book, for example, once, if 135 passes next week, the codification won't get put into the actual municode book portion until the end of the year, because they codify twice a year, but you can find the ordinance online.
Minutes.
I'm sorry?
If you go to look at the ordinance, the municipal ordinance, it's on the tab, you were going to add to the, in, in, are we the...
We archive a lot of official approved documents, minutes, and so they're in our archive center, and I, for draft, I've looked at this, and I like that, so there should always be an updated current order of all ordinances, we have that on the citywide. So if we, we know something's been adopted, we can point people to their, or if they're paying attention, and they can find that exactly.
Right, so when you're on the front page of the website, down very bottom on the lower side is municipal code.
That's all.
Does it mean, does it mean, right?
That's our code.
Right, so if I click on that, does that mean, does that one gets updated twice a year, what's, what I click on here? Okay, so where would I, if I were to find something about this three months in, where would I go find what the current ordinance is?
You could go to archive section, let me find it here for you, how do I find an ordinance? Oh, that's okay. Let me find my page, City Clerk. So if you type in, and you go in, or if you type in where it's at the search site, you can type in ordinance, and it'll take you to their list of ordinances. Right now, I am, I do not have this last set, so those will be, that is on my list of things to get caught up on, yes, yeah, yep, uh-huh.
Do you look through some numbers around business licenses?
Sure.
I just like to track them.
Oh, okay.
Do we do more or less, and so about that, what do you do?
Well, we've done less businesses, last year, we did 546 business licenses, with the renewal date being done already, we've only done 462, so we're about, what, 80, 82 less, 82 businesses that have closed.
And you said that, you said we are doing some online, is that the payment for the licenses?
Yes, yes.
Or the application?
Are all online also, so if you're on the website right now, you can go down to the bottom where it says easy online bill pay.
Yep.
If you click on there, it'll bring up Easy Pay on the right, it's trying to get there, it's loading for me.
Want to do that on Microsoft?
Yeah, don't do that.
So basically, what I'm trying to understand, your whole objective next year is to get all this online?
Right, so that...
Do you have the current tools to do that, or are there any tools ready to do something?
No, I believe I can do that through a PDF form, the PDF way, where it's something I'm still working on, so I will have a definite answer for you by the time we come around to this strategic planning to see. I don't think there's going to be needed applications to buy, there's enough out there that I can probably get it done, but yeah, all of those are all right there, if you go on the Easy Pay site, and business license, peddler's, liquor, contractor, all there. Go ahead. Oh, look at that, see, and if you click Easy Pay now, Gina.
So citywide, what cars are out, citywide, we are looking into, and I was hoping to have a, we need to find a program universal to the city, like office, that we can do electronic signatures, secure documents, we need that in every department, and we now have a dedicated ability, so cars are out, she's not going to research off just her department, or city for her department, citywide, we, that is the next step that we have to progress to, and we've got some active tools online that happened in the last year that will help us get closer to that. Or secure, security now, secure signature file for any form that's online, whether wrong ones, permits, you know, easy sign online, or tire book devices, or even Cindy would HR forms, so there'll be a combination of that working for citywide, too.
Then last question, sorry, more questions?
Sure.
Do you have a permit or current U.S. made metrics in your department?
I am, I have my metrics list right here. Yep.
You're not full?
Yeah, no, I got my, my, right here is my City Clerk, it goes for the hours of operation, customer service, records, requests, all of that, yep, I do use it, you're welcome. Anything else? Told you, quick and easy, who's next?
Here, Carrie!
There you go.
Testing, okay, it's on. Okay, Mayor, Board of Alderman, and fellow staff members, this is different, I'm, I'm the number cruncher in getting out in the opens, not, doesn't come naturally to me, if you'll bear with me, I liked what Tara said about introducing the fellow staff members, I, but then, my department, I have three team members, I have April White as the staff accountant, and you're probably most familiar with her on monthly financial reports that we put together, and she's responsible for pushing those out to everybody. If you have a question about your utility bill, you're most likely going to talk to Keegan Powers, she's the utility clerk currently, and Abby Mulder is the AP and payroll clerk, so if there's any issues in those area with vendor pay or things like that, you're most likely going to talk to her. We do have, we are keeping a list of metrics as well as the City Clerk's office for accounts payable, how many checks, which we are currently looking into paying more with ACH or electronic options, we're moving, going to look at that and reduce the number of checks and mailing again. We had been using, using under Central Bank, a credit card system, which a lot of vendors initially signed up for and then kind of dropped out because of the cost associated with that, so we're looking, since we've changed banking services, we're looking at some different options to offer them some electronic pay options. Challenges for my department, technology, fraud, I, you know, we're constantly under cyber attack, we had our first counterfeit bill not too long ago at the park, things like that, looking at, constantly keeping with technology, and Gatsby accounting rules, keeping up with, trying to prepare the 22nd audit award. And in technology, I would like to take a quick, we just recently were given notice by Tyler Technologies, that we're going to have available to the city's utility customers, an app that they can use on their phone, this is at no additional cost to the city, so I would love to take seven minutes to show you the intro video that they put together for this product.
Hi, I'm Weston Anderson, and I'm the product manager and dev manager for the MyCivic Apps team here at Tyler, and today we're going to look at the MyCivic Utilities app. So this is the Tyler Town environment of MyCivic, and what you see on the screen is multiple MyCivic modules, today we're going to be looking at utility billing, so I'll just scroll around to our utility billing module, you can see that right here at the bottom, and I'm just going to click on that to open up the MyCivic Utility Module. Now, I'm already signed in with my user, and what you see when you come in as a signed-in user is you'll see three tabs at the top, the Accounts Tab, Usage Tab, and History Tab. Here on the Accounts Tab, you're very quickly able to see your current balance, as well as some information about all of your linked accounts, and if you have multiple accounts, they just show up in a list here at the bottom of the screen. For each account, you're able to see some information as, as a public user, for example, your account number, account status, account balance, and service address. You also see the date of your next bill due date, and throughout this module, we've really focused on how can we empower citizens to answer a lot of their own questions without having to always contact the city. One of the ways that we do that is through this PDF icon, when I click on that PDF icon, it opens up the PDF of their current bill, and that user can then do everything that you can normally do with a picture on your cell phone, so you can zoom in, zoom out, you can save it, email it, do all of that kind of stuff. You can also use this PDF in our history section, so I'm just going to flip over to the history tab, and on our history tab here, you can see that this is a development account, so I don't have any transaction history, but a normal account will have all of their transactions listed here at the bottom of the screen. That includes bills, payments, any fees, including late fees or cutoff charges, anything like that, and all of those bills will also have that PDF icon on there. This is another great way for citizens to be empowered to answer a lot of their own questions, so they can use that PDF of previous bills to do things like prove residency, whereas before that might take 20 minutes for a customer service rep to log into Incode, look up that person's account, download their last couple of bills, email that to them. Now, you can direct the citizen right to the MyCivic app, where they can pull all of their previous bills right here within the app. And if a citizen is looking at that PDF and saying, gosh, how could my bill be so high, you can flip right over to the Usage Tab, and they can see a chart of their current usage. Now, this will show two bars for any account, it'll show a bar for this year and a bar for last year, so that citizens can see their consumption compared to last year, and see any spikes or trends. For example, we're coming up on spring and summer, as we do, people are going to start turning on their sprinkler systems and start doing things like filling pools, that's where you're going to really start seeing some spikes in consumption over time, and that's where citizens will start to have questions of, how could my bill be so much higher this month than last month? Right here in the Usage Tab, they'll be able to see that information. This Usage Tab also integrates with Tyler Smart Meters, so when you have the Tyler Smart Meter product, we're able to then show a couple of different options to switch the interval from your normal bill consumption interval down to hourly or even daily, so that you can see much more granular information here on, on the app. You can also switch it from consumption to cost, so that citizens can see not only their bill consumption in kilowatt hours or gallons, but they can see what that actually means in dollars, which is a great way to level set for the public. And when a citizen is ready to pay, all they have to do is flip right back over to the Accounts Tab, click on the Pay button, and we bring them right into a very simple payment screen that follows all of your current settings for the online portal. So if you allow partial payments or overpayments, the mobile app will too, and if you ever change those settings in the future, the mobile app will stay in sync with those online settings, so you never have any double setup between the mobile app or the online portal, they're always in sync. And for the citizen, there's no double setup either, that same username and password that they use on the online portal is the one that they use to log into the app, and if a citizen doesn't have an online account, they can register for one right here on the app, and it will not only register them for the app, but it'll register them for the online portal. And when I'm looking to make a payment, you'll notice I already have my payment methods here coming directly from the web portal, so all the payment methods stay in sync as well, and if I add a new payment method here on the mobile app, it gets added to the website. It's a very, very simple process for both you and the citizen. And then all of the payments that are made through the mobile app go into the exact same web packet as the web payments, so there's again, no additional steps at your end of day when you go to settle these payments. One last thing I'd like to show you is just our auto pay option here on the mobile app. When you open up auto pay, it's very, very simple for a citizen to set up auto pay, and this is one of the greatest features that we have, this makes sure that the citizen will never miss a payment, and that you guys will never miss that incoming revenue. So all a citizen has to do to set up auto pay is simple, three clicks, select a payment method, select the day you want that payment to come out, and then click enroll and auto pay, and that's it. And that's the UB demo for today, thank you very much.
So we are moving forward with that option, we've been talking to Tyler, and we're like six to eight weeks out, and then some, I'm sure some training and some things, but that, that's on the horizon very soon. Some of the other things I have, I'm just, I don't know, we'll be working with the ambulance this year on a Medicare audit, which we thought was going to be due last year, they gave us another year to work on it because of COVID issues. Always working on maintaining cities' records and just accuracy. And then the only other thing I have, I did take the opportunity to put, since we are winding down on Pruitt's Point, I took the opportunity to put a report together, I'm not going to go through that line by line, you can take it with you, but I did highlight some of the dates of when it started, what the center looked like, what the projects and costs looked like that were funded by the TIF bonds, the number of bonds that were issued, and when they were refunded, and also the final kind of some plans and a snapshot of some of the instructions that will wrap up this. And based on my current estimates, I believe that the TIF bonds will pay in full in November, and we will be complete with this project before year end. I also included a revenue sheet on the very end that kind of gives you the history of what has flowed through that project. Do you have any questions for me?
So you're saying all this TIF, TIF will be, I guess, the dollar paid off in November?
The bonds will be paid, we'll look at any other outstanding issues, arbitrage costs, bond council, you know, there might be some final costs and processes to wrap up, but I believe the bonds will be paid off at that November 1st time slot.
I have...
Yes, Bob?
One question, this is going back to the app, I've got a credit card that has that exact same app that I have on my phone, but one of the things I just want you to verify or clarify with the company is, what is the lag time from when a payment is made through the app to when it's actually credited to the account? Is it instantaneous, or is there a 24-hour lag?
Lagged.
I know my credit card is 24-hour lag, so if I make a payment right now, it won't show on my statement balance until tomorrow.
Okay, lag time question, okay, I'll look into that. Phyllis?
Carrie, going back to this Tyler, credit cards were used, and what about the automatic debit for the checking account?
They, they do not mention that, because this is their software product, and I'm sure it benefits, we still have the ACH option, which we, is always our first, when we have a customer approach us about electronic payment, that is always our first suggestion, but...
Okay, and then also, people that do budget billing, are they going to show like Erin does all the time, as far as the over or less at the end of the year, things like that?
The city does not currently have budget billing per se, I mean, I guess you can do it on your own, you know, we have people that prepay for mon, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to piggyback on what you said.
Michael.
I was on the phone with Incode all day, from a hardware standpoint, we have sufficient, our server is currently up to date, so we don't add any funds, no server storage, I feel like that's pretty important here, that not only from a subscription standpoint, but from a hardware standpoint, we have everything we need to move forward.
Thank you for including that, so there are no hidden costs that we're...
No, we did scans, and we're, we're right where we need to be.
Thank you for adding that.
Carrie, I can answer both those questions if you'd like me to, so, so the payments on real steam are posted when the packet is approved, usually either at the end of the day or at the beginning of the day. Now, when the payment is made, at least on the online site, you can see where it'll say pending, but once, once a first staff goes and posts that packet, then it updates live and syncs with the app, okay? And as far as, I think you were asking about debit cards, and as far as the app is concerned, debit cards, the same.
Actually, I just pulled up the app, you can actually enter in your checking account information, the routing number, et cetera, it'll come directly from a checking account.
Thank you.
Richard.
Two questions, one, is there some tools you need, like, you know, by a paper check? That should just be, it's a simple one, but I know it's not, so I figured there's something, definitely need the payments of the bank.
Actually, we've just been trying to line out all of the banking since the change, we're... We're just trying to line out all of that first before we reach out to customers to get set up on an ACH. I think we'll have a very large amount that want to do that. It's just a matter of...
But that's what we receive, right?
Oh, I'm talking about paying, the payables.
Okay, all right. I'm just a customer, so I wasn't thinking about ACH.
Oh, I'm, yeah.
No, that's okay. So, I just, maybe it's, some people may not disagree, but it's our pay, direct check. And then, what is that you might, so, I'm not, you don't know what you need, so what are your problems?
We have everything we need. We're just ironing out the processes with the current, with the new bank at this point.
Do you have, I'm not sure, well, you said you had to sort of that process, but figure that out yet?
We were already in an electronic process when we were with Central Bank. We are kind of, we are in the middle of working with First Mid, and before we put a blanket option out to all of our vendors.
So would you have more of a name on that guy, budget, review time, usually, or is that a little terrible to do that off, or is it right?
Yes.
I just want to say showing a video is cheating, Carrie.
Yeah, cheating, cheating.
Carrie Patterson from the City of Osage Beach Planning Department. The Planning Department is made up of one and a half employees. I'm sure Pam considers herself a full employee, but I get half of her, as well as the Building Department, and she does most of the work in both of our departments. From a metrics standpoint, most of my metrics center around the timely review of permit applications and the giving of information to both the Planning Commission, Board of Aldermen, the Board of Zoning Adjustment, any other committees that I would need to provide any information to. Real quick, just a look inside the way I do things. I've always been a disciple of the complete community concept or aspect of planning. And typically, I wouldn't read a definition to you, but I'd like to read kind of the planning profession's version of what a complete community is. A complete community is one that considers varying transportation options and connectivity, mixed and efficient uses of land, healthy environments, job growth and business diversity, and an involved citizenry that helps define the community's unique character and sense of place. The complete community's concept is one that aims to meet the basic needs of all residents of the community, regardless of income, culture, or political ideologies, through integrated land use planning, transportation planning, and community design. Okay? So there's lots of aspects to what planners do. From the standpoint of the direction that I like to go from a professional is this concept, the complete community concept. What that means to me basically is to provide a place in our city to become a community that everyone can live and work and own business comfortably and safely, where our kids can go to school and learn comfortably and safely, and where our senior adults can enjoy their retirement comfortably and safely and get all of the services that they need within our own community. Okay? One thing I will say is that because of what we are, both a tourist community, and because of how difficult it is to develop our land, which is not something that we did, it's what the good Lord gave us when He gave us our land, it makes that concept very difficult. And we've talked about it, you know, many, many times. From the perspective of what we're looking at, commercial development, we have a lot of commercial development. We are still growing from a commercial capacity and perspective. We see commercial building permit requests every day. We have jobs, a lot of jobs. Probably most of the business owners here would tell you that we have too many jobs, and they would like to have some more people to work those jobs right now. And as far as difficulties go, or challenges that we have from a commercial perspective, one, you're looking at how difficult it is to develop because of the amount of rock and the topography issues that we have in town, and also the fact that we've got some older structures and facilities that are, have gotten to the point to where bringing them back to life, if you will, has gotten past the point of affordable for a lot of people who would like to do business in town. So what you're seeing is, is a movement towards new facility within our community. Okay? And you're going to see quite a few more new facilities coming in the near future. I know Ron is going to do a little talking about what we've seen so far by way of development, so I'll leave that up to him. From a residential perspective, we all know what we're working towards and what we need, the affordable slash workforce housing side of things. And we spoke a little bit at the last board meeting about, you know, the challenges that face us from that perspective. You know, it costs a lot of money to develop here from a land perspective, okay? And by the time people get what, you know, they want done, you know, you would be paying rent on a, you know, on an apartment that at one point started out with the thought of being affordable, by the time they were done, is about the same as a mortgage payment for a 300 north thousand dollar home. That's not affordable. You know, not going to lie, you know, some of our sewer impact fees can be challenging for them too, especially by way of multifamily housing and things like that. But there have been some capabilities put in for, you know, some exception by the board not too long ago. From the perspective of our current activities, the Planning Commission is back in business for a little while. It seemed like we didn't have a lot of meetings. Now, we're having quite a few meetings. The thing about the Planning Commission is absolutely nothing goes through the Planning Commission that doesn't end up coming through the Board of Aldermen. So you see everything that goes through the Planning Commission and make the ultimate decision on those things. In the past year, that includes a PUD and a NEO overlay that took us some times and a number of meetings, but it got through, and both of those have resulted in multimillion-dollar developments that are currently underway. Also, you know, the ordinance on residential use ratio for structures, that also went through the Planning Commission, came through the board, and was approved. As it pertains to successes, ordinances like that, you know, every other thing that comes through the Planning Department, while I consider it a success, ordinances like the use ratio and the medical marijuana ordinance that we put through that was written in-house and was written tailored to the City of Osage Beach are the things that I'm most proud of, because those come from the input from our community and then from their representatives, who are you. Okay? Those are not something that, you know, I went out and found in another ordinance book or something like that. You know, I listened to what the community and you all had to say, put that ordinance together, and it went through the Planning Commission and the board, was approved. And honestly, I'm very proud of those. You know, those are something that, quite candidly, we all did together. The Board of Zoning Adjustment is another, the other group that I am the professional liaison to, and you all don't hear as much about. But the BZA has heard more variances in 2020 than they heard in 2015, 16, 17, 18, and 19 combined. And in 2021, we have already seen five. I attribute that to probably three factors. One being the desirability to be at the Lake of the Ozarks during the COVID pandemic. People wanted to be here because there was a perceived greater amount of normalcy or freedom, and people were buying structures and homes that ultimately they got a hold of and decided they wanted to improve. The second thing is just, in general, they spent more time at home. And the third thing would be the money that everyone received from the government, or most people received from the government for stimulus, that is part of it. And that's why we're seeing the number of variances requested that we have. As far as the needs for my department, you know, my product is providing information and review to the BZA, the Planning Commission, the Board of Aldermen, and whoever may need it. And then timely, you know, review of permit applications. And I can do that by use mainly of IT stuff, you know, my computer, my programs, my printers, my scanners. I know that Michael is probably sick of hearing, "Carrie's scanner's not working." It's a very nice scanner, it just sometimes it has a hiccup. Updated market and data needs information is something that, you know, I always try to stay on top of and is very necessary for me to be able to, you know, give recommendations and information to all these groups that I feel is accurate and efficient. And then the comp plan update. I will go ahead and say, from a comp plan perspective, I do not follow, I guess, or get into the planner's handbook of, "You got to do it at this many, every this many years." Well, my gosh, if you haven't done it every 10 years, then what are you doing? From my perspective, I've always been a person who has looked at a comprehensive plan, that if it still fits what you are doing as a community and where you want to go, and it's accurate to what's going on in your community, then why pay somebody six figures to give you another document that says the same thing? Okay? Comprehensive plans, you know, I think it's a situation to where both the community and, you know, myself, when we're looking through things, if it's clearly not working anymore, then it's time to update. But a community shouldn't be forced to update a comprehensive plan. If it still works, if it's still who you are and want to be, then it's still an accurate plan. From the perspective of budgets, I have no immediate expenditures that I am looking to do. All of the informational equipment that I have through Michael is still good. My scanners, my printers, my computer, you know, the IT department takes care of our machines, so I've never had a problem with those. And even if I do have something small, you know, it's taken care of relatively quickly. The only other thing would be the comprehensive plan. If they're, you know, if the community and the board feels like there's a need to update it, then we will look into that process. Once we do that, it will be, you know, a minimum six-figure type of process, and will be a 12 to 18-month process with community input. You know, the other challenges that have pertained to our department, obviously, public perception and accurate information when it is pertaining to some of the more difficult cases and things that we see within the community. And you've all been at those meetings, and those are some of the challenges. And then, I guess, finally, kind of the last thing that I'll dive into just a little bit, and I haven't talked to, you know, about this with anybody, but an on-staff city engineer, this is not any kind of indictment of Cochran at all. This is more my experience as the city planner, trying to serve the public. When we had an on-staff city engineer, especially when they were one office away, you know, Ron and I could give them a call or walk into their office and say, "Hey, do you have a second? We got some citizens here, developers here that have some questions." And we could sit down and iron those things out, you know, someone that their main job was to be the custodian and the enforcer of our code, and our code only, know what those guidelines are, and just generally be available. I can tell you without a doubt that, from my perspective, having Ron in the office, having Ed in the office, you know, Tara, whoever it may be, and having the ability just to go to that person and ask the question while they're sitting there, or, you know, give Ron a call, an office away, and say, "Hey, I've got a couple folks in here, do you have a second?" Is a huge service plus to our people, our developers, our prospective developers. And when we had a city engineer, especially in-house in this building, that was, that was an immense help for, for me. For a lot of things, including, you know, development review and going through preliminary plats for major subdivisions, those things, that was huge. But with that, that's all I have. Any questions?
So, Carrie, a couple things along. Do you feel like you can update the national plan at the City of Compton, so I'm sure you're sure you're on all of them? Or do you feel like it is still generally personal, so we're still, we'll fill it and do that?
I feel like it's still a good plan, and, you know, everything that I bring to, to the Planning Commission and the board still comes from that. If it was a situation to where we started having requests that, that just did not fit with that, then I would 100% you know, let the board and the Planning Commission know, "This is no longer a fit. We're, we are developing differently, our pattern is different, we need to take a look at this." There was a thought that, you know, once the highway got in and we saw how people got accustomed to that, there might be a need to do so. But that was also in our mind back when we did it, and, and I don't see that the ideologies that are in there require at least a huge change, you know, a six-figure kind of process at this point.
And secondly, if you talk about data information, not what we do, but is there anything we're missing that, I'm sure some of them want something, you know, that, right? From our perspective, the developers, you know, we usually have the information that they're looking for, or is there something missing that you might need?
From the perspective of what, what I'm asked for, we absolutely have what they need. We provide, you know, maps and data and, and surrounding land use and, and, you know, all types of illustration and information to them. And as of yet, I haven't really found anything that I've sat back and gone, "Oh, crap, I don't have any way to get that to them." So...
Carrie, not being disrespectful to you, but is there somebody else or some other group that should be looking at a comprehensive plan? You feel it's in good shape, and I respect that, but should we, you know, as we move forward, I don't want to get us to a point where all of a sudden we say, "Oh, yeah, if we're behind you," but also, as we move forward in our strategic planning, is there a special group we want to put together? Is there some citizens group? Is there some professionals within our, within our own community that we want to look before we have to spend the big bucks? You know, that could, could, could say, "We agree with you, Carrie," or, "We disagree, and these are the reasons we feel it should be." I'm just looking at a process that we can...
Yeah, it's, it's a situation to where, you know, the comprehensive plan is the Planning Commission's, you know, document as well as the board. So if I were going to say if there's a couple of groups that would want to take a look at it, just to make sure that, you know, you're not going to look at a comp plan or any document and agree with everything that's written in it, you know? But those would be the two groups that, that I would want, or I believe should take a look, because you've got the, you know, the representatives of the public being you all, and then you're appointed members and custodians of the, the planning in the community. So those two groups, whether it be a couple members or three members of the board and two or three members of the Planning Commission as a small subcommittee, or both groups together, or whatever, would certainly probably be the right groups to, to look at that. Because Planning Commission makes the recommendations to you, and you all make the decisions. So it's, it's very much your document.
But you're the one who uses the comp plan, which should not ever be replaced with a management, you know, more than, you know, anyone else. And while it's adequate for recommendations that you made to both the Board and Planning Commission, it's a document that you use to keep your job down and work with the City of the Commission. It exists.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, I'm the, I'm the one that reads it every week, basically. And, you know, from Alderman Rucker's perspective, I can certainly see where, you know, it could be believed that I have too much confidence in the document that we have. I guess what I would say is that I at no point have felt a lack of confidence in recommendations that I've made based on the comprehensive plan. And if that was to become a situation or get to a point where that was the case, then I would, I would certainly, you know, ring the bell on it. But again, you know, it's the Planning Commission and the Board of Aldermen's document, and whenever or wherever they want to go through that process, I know, I've spoke to Alderman Ross about this quite a bit, you know, and one of the things that I wanted to make sure that we had before we went into the process again was, you know, the analytics of what our market was. What do we have too much of? What do we not have enough of? So we know what to pattern our community after when we do, when we do a new plan. Along with, you know, there was a time where they were going to update the transportation master plan to include the, the highway and everything. So it was going to be kind of one of those things where all of those documents and that information would be used together to come up with one comprehensive master plan.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah. With your complete community concept in mind, with your opinion, are we fulfilling that, or not? What do you, what do you want to say?
From the perspective of complete community, I think that we have shortfalls. We have shortfalls in housing for, you know... shortfalls in housing for, you know, people who work here, people who have business here, you know. Any community should or would like to have the desire to be able to house everyone that wants to work and, and/or have a business within their community. The second thing that I would say that we fall short on is, is connective transportation of an alternate use, you know, besides cars. Every time we start talking about, you know, sidewalks and sidewalk plans, the first thing that comes out of my mouth is, let's make sure that we view sidewalks as a transportation system and not a recreational system. Because when you start looking at it as a transportation system, then you see the necessity of providing those main arteries as opposed to just a sidewalk down this local street and a sidewalk down that local street. And a complete community will provide those alternate means of transportation because not everybody can drive. Not everybody can do whatever. And, you know, if you've spent much time in the city, you've seen how many people walk. And, you know, the, the one thing that I will say, you know, there's always conversation about, you know, well, how many people are walking on the road right now? You know, Nichols Road is a, is a classic example. We don't see many people walking on Nichols Road. Well, Nichols Road is dangerous. It really is. It's got some blind curves and some stuff like that. Sidewalks are a classic example of if you build it, they will walk. You know, you put a sidewalk on Nichols, people will walk. Right now, walking in the roadway is probably too dangerous. But it's hard to make the decision on where to put a sidewalk just based on who's walking on the road right now, because there will be people that walk if you give them the means.
One question, you talked about analytics, for several of the plans, if we did reviews. Those analytics, where would you feel like that would come from? Is that something that would come from a market plan or some sort?
Well, the market study would certainly provide, you know, so we have the, the residential study that was done by Lordak, and it gives us numbers for both the region and the community on where our shortfalls are residentially. But from the perspective of, you know, do we have enough restaurants to serve? Do we not have enough? Do we need more grocery or lumber or whatever? You know, those are the kind of things that you would get from, you know, a market study, that, that number would come from a market study. And if that came back and said, your, you know, your community's saturated with this, but has severe shortfalls in this or residential, what that allows us to do from a future land use perspective is, you know, fundamentally dedicate more property to the shortfall in your future land use map than that, that you're saturated with.
What would it cost?
You know, that's, that's not really a plan that, I, that's more something I use that I would have done. That's more your, you know, your city administration or, or economic, you know, professional would come up with, with that plan.
All right, I'm Ron White, I'm the building official. And my department is, myself, I have a full-time inspector who also takes care of compliance, a part-time maintenance personnel, and I, as Kerry stated, we share a secretary. Just going to go over some highlights of the building department. It's actually comprised of a couple, what I, what I kind of think of a couple of different layers. We've got building inspection, we have compliance, and we have the building maintenance. Starting with building inspection, you've got, I think everybody's got this paper in front of them, but I'll just kind of hit the highlights. Obviously, the number of permits and the permit valuation that we're seeing now, we're seeing some significant improvement. Year-to-date through May of 2020, we saw 2.15 million in valuation of construction. Year-to-date this year, we're already at 11.3 with over $13 million worth of projects sitting on my desk right now, waiting to be reviewed. So, and, and even more coming. It's, it's looking to be a, an outstanding year. As you guys know, the, the new code adoption is complete. We begin the enforcement of those codes July 1st, just coming up around the corner. And I wanted to make sure to point out, this was asked of me at one time, if somebody comes in and they've got a large project, they come in July 2nd and turn that, those plans in, and they've been designed to the 2012 codes, will there be a rejection of those plans? And historically, we've never done that. We've never made the abrupt change. It's been something that we, to be quite frank, most of the people who are designing now anyway, or they're designing to the 18. But if, if that were to come about, we've always ramped this in. If there's a new technology that's not covered under the 2012, they have to show that it, that it works anyway. So you're almost forced into compliance to the newest code, because that's what's going to address it. But so far, there's been no concerns brought up to me. And as I stated during the board meetings, those codes have been enforced around the Lake area by other jurisdictions for a while. Let's see, the new building inspection maintenance vehicle that was budgeted for this year was ordered in January, same time that the police cars were. But I see the new patrol cars have arrived, and we're still waiting. I don't know how that happens. But I did contact the gentleman, same guy. He said it looks like August, we're hoping for August. So I guess we're waiting on one of those coveted computer chips that everybody, I keep hearing about. Another highlight, I am starting floodplain administrator training. That is slated next July, next month, yes. So something that I have not done in the past, but am going to become educated on, actually excited to, to learn something new. This old dog. Some of the challenges in the building inspection portion, I am going to recommend the reimplement, re-implementation of a second full-time inspector, taking us back to having the one building inspector and then that does full-time building inspections, and then one full-time employee that, that goes between building inspections and compliance. That's something that we decided last year, go down to just one inspector and utilize the Public Works Construction Inspector to, to pick up any shortcomings that we had. But as, again, as I stated earlier, construction right now is going through the roof, and that, that short-lived lull is, is far past. In addition to the business that we're seeing and the fact that our construction inspector will undoubtedly be taking on our, our city construction projects, something that we've needed to do, especially whenever natural gas came through, we need to add the permit and inspection requirements for the replacement of water heaters and HVAC. Obviously, when, well, I shouldn't say obviously, whenever you replace those inside city limits, although there's no permit or inspection requirement, those are required to be done according to code because we have that code adopted. The only time we get involved is if somebody has a question and they contact us and say, hey, I don't think this was vetted right, can you come out and look? Absolutely, that's what we're here for. But I, I think it is in our best interest and the best interest of this community to make that permit requirement, to, to ensure that on all installations. Challenge that we've seen, Kerry, believe it or not, he and I really didn't discuss this, but realizing the value of having an in-house engineer for plan reviews, day-to-day inquiries, staff and community members. And we get frequent phone calls, people that come in all the time, we get emails, and sometimes it's stuff that Kerry and I, we can't answer. You know, if we can look it up in the code, easy enough. If it's something that we're not the expert on, fortunately, right now, we have Lloyd sitting right outside of our office, and that guy has a tremendous amount of knowledge when it comes to our public utilities. So we rely on him probably more than we should. Just reiterating what, what Kerry said, that is a challenge. I, I have realized it as much as anybody. And I always, when I talk about it, I go back to whenever we had an outside attorney. The, the benefit to staff and to the public in having Ed in-house, the time savings, the, you know, sending something out, waiting for two days for an answer. In the construction industry, when you need answers, you need answers now. And a lot of these guys, it will delay their project if they don't get that answer today, because it could be something they've, they've hit out in the field. And, and again, kudos to Cochran Engineering, they've been absolutely wonderful to work with. I just wish Dave would share an office with Kerry. Just so he's right there, yeah, that would be great. To touch on a goal, archiving permit files. Our, our archives right now are busting at the seams. We're always looking for creative ways to create more storage area. One of our goals this year, not just mine, but I've implemented them into the staff's goals, is that we are going to get together, and that is something we're going to tackle. According to the, the state retention schedules, we have got to be diligent in going back so many years and getting rid of as many of those boxes as we can. We don't have to maintain every bit of every file, and we need to make that reduction. Which kind of rolls me into the next topic on this page. And I've given the board members and some of management, those who I thought might actually be interested in looking at it, gave them a handout. It's the plan review tables. These would, we started discussing it last year, Gina and I did. Something that has been on, one of the goals that she has made for me is becoming more electronic, I guess, more, okay. So we have a lot of people request, hey, can we just submit our plans electronically? Can you give us feedback electronically? Well, for single-family residential, I say, yeah, you can email it to me, I'll look through it, you know, that's easy enough. But on big engineering plans, that's really impossible. You can't look at it on your desktop or on your phone. So these tables allow you to open those documents. Basically, the 24 by 36-inch sheets that I have out on my desk that I'm flipping, you've got the 44-inch screen that you can, it's just like your phone, but it's huge. You know, you've got the electronic picture of those plans, you can magnify, you can put notes on there. There's a screen off to the side, you can have your codes pulled up. It just, it really simplifies, it speeds stuff up. I can circle something, send it right back to the engineer who sent it to me. So, you know, this is what I need you to clarify, rather than trying to describe it in an email or a letter, you know, which, that is not that difficult, just more time-consuming to do it the old-fashioned way with papers sitting on my desk. The other benefits to this, to these plan review tables, the comments, greater efficiency, oh, the electronic storage. Rather than having the paper files sitting in a cardboard box on a shelf downstairs, hopefully it's properly labeled, all of this is stored electronically. It doesn't have to be microfiche, it's just, it's there, it has the storage capabilities. This is something I have ran past Michael. Obviously, if we bring this, or when I bring this, and if you guys approve it, this is not something that I am fully educated on at this time. It's something that Michael and I would have to sit down and discuss to find out, what are the memory, you know, what, what kind of requirements do I need to be able to store 20 years, you know, the next 10, 20 years' worth of plans electronically? So that's something I'm excited about, a little nervous about, because I'm just now starting to figure out how to use my cellphone. So this is, this will be a new one for me, but I think it, once I get it mastered, it would be great for the department. Other goals, obviously, continuing the professional development, maintaining our CEUs, obtaining new certifications in the construction business. Compliance, oh, I guess, if we wanted to, if anybody has questions about building inspection, if we don't want to jump back and forth.
Before you get off this high plane table, I don't expect the answer, but I worry you do research and bring it forward. I would like to know the value of this, going back to the earlier years of my career, when I'm sitting on the scene of a building collapse, and I want to call you out and have you bring documents and bring stuff up to show me, how can I get these people that are trapped in this certain area, you have the way the building was built, that is important to determine what to do when you are in an emergency situation. I'd like to know the value of that, and how that can be used, and how this would assist in that type of, of a situation.
Sure. I, I can tell you, you know, if the hypothetical situation occurred today, and it was a building that's in archives downstairs, obviously, it's going to take us more time to get down there, we find the file, the file will tell us where the plans are, which flat file those are in, and we sort through those, rather than just getting on the computer, typing in the name, and having that information available like that. I can see down the road that these are going to be, there's going to be connectivity if we, if we go this route. You would probably see the same type of plan review table in Kerry's office and in the Public Works review staff, whether that be the city engineer or a, an outside firm. That way, rather than us, again, whenever I get a roll of plans, they first go to Kerry, he makes sure that it's the right use, right location, parking's good, goes through all of his addresses, the, the property, and then Public Works or our engineering crew will review for, for utilities, infrastructure, and so forth, and I review for the building portion. To have these, to be able to go out, boom, 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 we're all looking at the same thing. If I have a question, I don't have to try to catch Kerry, I can send him, you know, send the picture of what I'm questioning over to him, and we're able to communicate just instantaneously on these, on these machines. So, again, it, it makes me nervous thinking about it, but I think it's something that'll be really awesome. I'd love to be.
It's also connected to, like, the tablets. So when you're talking about, like, when Alderman Rucker's talked about having something out in the field, they would be able to pull up those plans on a tablet and look at it as opposed to having a paper copy out on top of it.
And the other, since this is an electronic file, as soon as we got done with a, a large building or something, whether it's multifamily, whether it's a commercial project, I attach it and I send it right over to the, the fire marshal. And now he's got it, if he needs it. I send it to whoever needed it, and it's, it's that quick. So, yeah.
You had a ballpark, I know this is new, but ballpark, all part estimate of what this would cost?
And that's, we would have to go through it, get into it a little more in-depth. The very basic units, and, and deeper into that manual, you'll see there are some prices in there. The, the cheaper one's $7,500. To get the ones that are fully expandable, large, you know, easier to see, not that I have vision problems, but around $14,500 is what we are looking at for proposal, proposal next year, or last year, I'm sorry, for this year. So we're probably looking in the, closer to $14,000.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, Alderman, you've been interested today, I guess I'm a little confused, why we would use our own servers and just buy a great big TV computer. And so, that's the question I'll be asking a moment. I don't understand why we want to store things on this. I wanted to see if we want to store things on our own servers and access it that way. So, well, I don't, I do believe that we should allow contractors, developers, whoever, to submit electronics. And so, there may be tools that we need to make sure we do that, but to collect the, to implement an additional system to be able to store it. And so, it seems odd, and maybe there's a little reason for it, but.
Yeah, I wouldn't be able to answer the, the storage. I, I don't know that it, that the storage would necessarily be on the, I'm not sure. Again, that's something I'd have to dig into some more, the, yeah.
Terrible storage.
But the, the primary would be, you know, we could receive stuff electronically now. It's being able to use and manipulate that with what we have now is more than difficult, if not impossible.
The types of files that we can simply, you know, have the software and load them out?
It's, I, I don't know that, what type of software it would take. We don't have the software, that, that is correct. And again, I'm, I'm new to all this. I do know that the software, we don't have the software necessary. We have, we borrowed a, not borrowed, we used a license from one of the contractors that was at the hospital, they shared with us because they had more license agreements open, so that they could say, they would send it to our tablet and say, this is the area of the building that we need inspected. And then whenever we would do the inspection, if we found problems with it, we could mark on there, it was here, here, and here. The software would be easy to obtain through license agreements. I think right now, our biggest challenge would be having the, the proper hardware, being able to manipulate that information without a mouse or keyboard. It's all touchscreen, just like flipping the plans.
The ideology behind it is, is I like that of a planner, you say, or you lay out a paper copy, and if Ron's going through it, you know, he can flip pages, like, do this, and, and make, you know, those comments and highlight things, put the document right in front of him, whereas it's, it's a little more typical.
And rather than sending back and forth pages, it's my understanding that when they make a change on their plans, it's, it's real time. You know, if we say this corridor has to be 60 inches wide, they change it, my plans change. They don't have to resubmit, and we just keep stacking paper and having to shuffle paper. We do a lot of that.
Just to read me a part, second person, that's okay. But, look, on another subject, have we made any progress in getting rid of the quote, Area 13, the documents that are at different prices in the city? Because that is something that I think we need to get past really fast.
I don't know, Area 13?
Over to Public Works, where you file on.
Area 51, oh.
Your home number.
Yes, that is something.
I've actually seen it here, and you brought up a little bit, that you need to patch that. And first thing we got to do is, is we got to start receiving electronic files, unless we're in a small scan, we have to receive electronic files. But we also hold these files that are set about somewhere in any mission of the year, but it takes questions for our purpose.
Well, I can jump in there. Part of what we're looking at is...
I think we're talking about, just to clarify, two different... I think we're talking about, just to clarify, two different issues here.
Storage, yeah, storage of, of plans, as well as files like that, physical storage, right, when I'm talking about electronic storage. Yeah, if we're gonna talk about that, uh, I have some stuff in my, um, in my presentation about document storage.
I'm not sure what you're talking about, document storage or something, I'm talking about making sure that we don't have, however, we need to go find something that we're not searching through, a bunch of pile cabinets, and hopefully, they're put back where they were supposed to be, that they somehow, whether it's our server or somebody else's, that knows there's a directory and a catalog where those can easily get access.
Yes, we have, we've actually been doing that over the years, um, our, our archive areas, I see, I, we've got one area that started, it predated me, uh, I think we were confusing, your Area 51 is what we called that upper level of Public Works where it became a catch-all, that's not, that's not building department files, there is an area over there that's a really large closet, and it was recently, um, sprayed down, uh, to, to get the insects out so that we could, or so that Kerry would be comfortable going in there with us to sort through that, it's, it's not an extensive number of files, but there are several over there. Most of our archives for the building department, um, for building sign sewer permits, uh, we have those in two locations here in City Hall, one is in the copy room, one is downstairs in our archive area, um, they are in permit order, we do have, uh, two programs that we run, the original program that was created by a gentleman who used to work here, and then we've switched over to Tyler Technologies when, when the city obtained that, either of those, if you give me an address, a property owner, a parcel number, we can go in and, and pull up that permit number, and we have all of the files in chronological order by permit number, so, yeah, we get that all the time, our sunshine requests, which I became really good at for a while, um, somebody asks for a file, yeah, you know, we've got 72 hours to respond, but I can usually have it to you in 10 minutes, I just gotta walk downstairs again.
The files are still paper?
Yes, they're not microfiche'd or.
Maybe I can say this one, it seems like our primary, um, catalog or, you know, file is still paper, and we are, and I think our file, if you will, should be electronic, um, that, that is a back, and the paper's a back, um, if we're gonna keep them, I'm not sure what the state regulations are, I think it's best, but I think we need to figure out the work to that, um, uh, because, for example, Kevin, Kevin standing there is concerned that if our, our official deals, uh, super, right, I'm shitting, I get a building official with a tablet, but a building official with a tablet should be able to pull up some of that information right there outside, it's usually get more even from it all over the phone, you can take that, that's the type of things that electronic stuff gives us, and so, I see the current switch overnight, but we need to start getting there faster, because I think we're, I don't believe that we're, my impression is only one wrong, and I'm moving down that path for a little.
Well, that was part of the reason that we got the large format scanner that is in our office room, and that was the ideology, uh, we were told at the time that we didn't have near enough storage capacity to convert our stuff to, uh, electronic files, so the ideology was, you know, at the time, I don't remember who the secretary was, but that person was gonna start with building permit files and start feeding them to that scanner so that, so that, uh, you know, 16 dash 052, we could just bring up on a server, but at the time, and it was Mr. Davis, I believe, that just said that we were, we had, we were near, we were still in training.
Absolutely, well, and that's where there's benefits of going to cloud storage, is the feasibility if you're in the field to access it, because it's not as simple as just going out to the field and the iPad speaking back to the city, there's security protocols hoops you have to jump through in order to get back into the environment to access your files, if you're storing them on Amazon's, let's say, storage center, you have all the security capabilities, backup, disaster recovery right there, and then the ability, as long as you have the internet anywhere in the world, you can access your files, so that was just a real quick, that I was gonna say, the benefit of off-site versus onsite storage, but from the standpoint of server capacity right now, there's no way we can house, you know, 30 years' worth of documents, there would have to be servers purchased, file servers purchased in order just to house documents and servers.
Sorry, it takes a long time to talk more about this, but, um, it seems like we're kind of in a, I realize that there were all the best intentions in summer history, we decided to start something, and so that we wouldn't be regular, or technologically advanced and well, but every go back and address will be a fact, and I'm not gonna be thinking of business, but, um, it seems like we still have that, it's all right.
Well, we only be lacking, uh, if you wanted to perform the concepts that you want to perform, because we don't have the capability, uh, to do that, uh, announce, uh, the servers, and we also would have to dedicate the man-hours required to go back to all those orders and go through, all of that, so, you know, that's something that was interesting to them, and something that, you know, we need to, you know, be, uh, looking at, what for this budget or follow.
It was, it was legitimately just a monster, as far as budget goes, to, to get enough storage capacity, when we started talking about it, I mean, it was a monster.
And by right now, we got capability using cloud, which we probably didn't have back when we first started looking at this, so now, we've got those options, and that may be a better way for us to go, we still have a lot of manpower and I, you know, to go in, pull the records, scan, and then set that up in addition, making sure, as Michael was saying, to make sure that you've got all your systems in place with all of the security associated with that, you know, before you even start that.
And as technology moves forward, we all know, storage has gotten cheaper over the years, when Mr. Davis was here, it was probably significantly more cost-effective to, or just to say, hey, we, we can't do it, it's got significantly cheaper, but so has cloud storage.
I, I don't wanna, um, put Todd's, jump, jump departments, but Todd's probably gonna be a good example, I mean, if, you know, slowly, we have to work on record protection, Kerry, I really think Kerry could be, I don't know how much cars that I took previously, or, Terry's, or Kerry's one of our, like, no, this is the records, this is the state, so she really does try to keep up with that, but Todd's department tackled a project, we brought in interns, and they spent hours scanning medical cards and 911 dispatch, so, it does take them hours, so we have slowly been quite, um, chunks of.
We had an entire room downstairs that we brought up from Area 51.
Spider-haul.
Brought over from there, it took us and Ashley and our workers' department, a little probably over six months stressed out, I mean, they had a whole time, they had time to be down there to do it, but we've actually got it down there, probably about five or 10 of those cardboard boxes that it's all, um, you know, that we have to keep, and everything else is, uh, you know, scanned in or been stored, so, I mean, when we started that project, we had stuff dating back to the 81, 82, and it, it's, it's quite wild, but.
It's worse if you can store electronic files and store.
It's, it's on our, it's on our server, or that we've ever done, or it's stored, you know, so we had, we could.
If I could just interject real quick, I know we didn't blame our topic here for Ron, but there's a couple of other things that we are doing that I want to make sure that you're aware of, number one, we, we have a microfiche program, uh, in, in Tara's department, which, which is used to scan in all of the new stuff that we do, but it also, I mean, she, she doesn't necessarily have all the manpower she needs, but you can also go back with that, and we also explored and will continue to explore, um, upgrades to our, uh, financial management software, and some of those upgrades that we've looked at have, have these built-in capabilities that are part of the program that allow for electronic storage of documents built in through the cloud, through type of text, cloud services, so, there are a lot of different options that, that we are looking at, um, you know, our, our current version of Incode was installed in 2007, and every year or so, Gina and I get together along with Kerry and kinda start to decide, when, when is it gonna be time to upgrade this, when is it gonna be time to take that in step, so those are all questions that we continually ask ourselves, uh, every year, and there are some nice products that provide the capability that Oliver Ross is talking about.
Any other, anyone else?
One statement, we keep talking about the man-hours that we take to archive all this information, who is going to do that for his department, his 1.5 employees? From whose man-hours is, is trying to do any of this going to fall under?
Well, I wanna go back to Todd, you know, seasonal hours, part-time, I mean, I know we dedicated, like, the time, the secretary, whatever, she had extra time, it's the same thing Tara's gonna have to do, or, we work in your way today, I mean, you know, five per hour signing someone, you know.
And you hire kids?
Yeah.
Are you hiring outside service?
Because I'm thinking with the other larger departments, you know, they've got staff in addition to people they're gonna assign, for, for a department like that where there's no employees.
We got, we got, somebody to reach out, use the midterm shift for the summer, and that's what we use.
You can use interns and things like that, I don't think quite I study, if there's down, I'm just with the department, I think, there's more capability, those can utilize those.
Okay, just my two cents.
Yeah, I would like to ask for an agenda item for the retreat to be electronic info present, and ask to have a more in-depth discussion rather than further.
All right, well, I'll move on to compliance, um, as stated here, the compliance issues are steady, most cases that we're handling now are reactionary, having different, uh, compliance officers throughout the year and different directives from various board members, we have varied back and forth between being very proactive, going out and patrolling for compliance issues, or being, how do I say it, not just, uh, okay, not going out and looking for them, just waiting for somebody to complain, yeah, reacting, um, and I, I would like direction from the board, um, as a whole on that, so that I know, you know, if I've got one board member saying, don't go out and harass them, and another board member saying, you need to get out there after them, you know, why are you letting this go, well, that, that kinda puts me in between a rock and a hard place, if I could get one direction, are we, um, are we wanting to go out and, and really crack down on, and maybe this is a discussion for another time, but the compliance issues anywhere from length of grass to parking a boat trailer on a surface that's not paved, um, we get one complaint, two complaints, uh, hey, these guys have got trailers parked in the grass, and we say, it's, the ordinance says it's gotta be hard-surfaced in certain zones, but you go around town, we've got a lot of boat trailers parked for, maybe it's just for the weekend, maybe it's all year, maybe, you know, it goes back and forth, I just need to know the direction to take on that if we want to take a hard stance, and I know it's, um, it has been a lot easier in my career to enforce building codes, because they're very easy to interpret, and this is what it says, it's safe or it's not safe, um, ordinance is such, or compliance is somewhat new to me, I just took it over a few years ago, this is, this is kind of a tough one for me, because it's not, is anybody gonna get hurt? Nah, uh, one neighbor could care less if you've got trailers in your yard, you're, you're at the lake, this is a vacation destination, it's, uh, we've got a lot of second homes, we're not worried about that, let them have their fun, and then you've got some folks that say, if that trailer's not go, I'm calling the mayor, I'm calling, I'm calling everybody, well, I, I kinda need a little direction on that, that's, that's a struggle.
I wrote it on my challenge, listening to you, and you're asking July.
And again, um, as I've stated in here, I only want to mirror what you guys decide, I don't have a problem taking either route, um, but I just need.
I personally have a problem with having an ordinance to not enforce it, and I don't like selective enforcement, okay, so for your kind of ordinance, and it's, and if there's a realistic reason for having it in the ordinance, it ought to be enforced, period, okay, it doesn't matter whether, you know, all of them are all slicing, I don't, or vice versa, that's, that's my opinion, but it is an item of discussion.
Okay.
At, at the, okay.
Can I make a comment on that one, please? I think part of what you're asking is, I, I agree with you, John, but do we want to spend his time driving up your road at the lake looking for the height of grass, or looking to see if this trailer's parked correctly, I think that's what this person's gonna say is, yes, we should enforce it, but is it a full-time job to just drive around town enforcing those type of codes?
It used to be more than that, it used to be, you know, someone calling in and s- and complaining, and all of them getting involved because they got it all from, you know, a neighbor and vice versa, so it's actually not just driving around, I mean, if we've got time to do that, we also, by the way, have our officers driving around, we have our work folks driving around, so if they know that there's a, an ordinance that's not in compliance, it's very easy just to ship that information or to bond to, you know, to a bag with, and then if these people have time, then they can get out and probably run, but the issue's gonna have to be, you know, do we enforce it, do we not enforce it, I think that's what.
Two, yeah, twofold though, that was the other, uh, you know, are, are we out patrolling for it, because we did have full-time compliance at one time, and he did patrol, um, and, and then we went kind of a combined compliance, building inspector, and, you know, you're patrolling, in essence, when you're out doing building inspections, you're driving around town, but it wasn't dedicated time just for, I'm hitting this, this block of the city this week, this block, right, all right. Building maintenance, um, this is stuff that I bring to you during budget time, just to hit on some of the, what, what's gonna be coming down the pipe, is wallpaper replacement throughout the building, we have patched and, and tuck pointed, so to speak, uh, I think as much as we can, we're curling edges, I think it's time to do the same thing in the restrooms as we did throughout, uh, the lobby a few years back, get rid of the wallpaper and get some paint on the walls, we'll continue to do concrete repair and replacement on the City Hall sidewalks and curbs, um, historic use of the salt has degraded those areas, uh, we did try out a new chemical last year to pre-treat with that is non-corrosive, uh, the Parks Department had started it, and then got me on board, and we are gonna go that route, because it's, uh, not only damaging to our plants, uh, but our, not only to our concrete, but also to our plants. Um, for the future, something we've talked about in the past before, the parking lot maintenance, that, that goes back to, um, again, back to what your desire is, uh, if we, if we're fine with the way it looks, that's fine, um, just, that's, that's gonna be coming up again, we've got continued HVAC maintenance, repair and replacement, um, that's gonna be a continual budget item, uh, we are about to the point where we're gonna need a roof inspection and repairs and replacement, or replacement of areas potentially, uh, we had a roof inspection, I'm gonna say it was seven years ago, I was gonna say five to 10, so I'm gonna stick with seven, uh, there were areas that were showing that, you know, we're getting to the point where we need to caulk some seams, and there are some, there were some areas that were damaged by the great hailstorm of whatever that was, 2002, but not to the point that the roof wasn't doing its job, but we're about to the point where we're gonna have to take a look at that as well. Um, items just to keep on the horizon, something that was discussed years ago, uh, was the construction of a second entrance coming around this side of the building, out to the Osage Beach Parkway, uh, giving a quicker access for emergency services to hit the Parkway, especially if we ever have an issue at our one entrance that we have, going back to emergency services, um, I think it's, it's always a better idea to have two ways in and out, and I have received that same type of support from emergency services, so, um, as things progress, that is something that I will be bringing to you. Cindy and I have discussed the potential for in-house janitorial slash maintenance position, uh, that being a full-time position, um, just that, that will be in discussions, we'll do more research on that, whether that's for this next budget or the year after that, uh, bring that forth to you guys for, uh, decision, and then, the only other thing is, uh, the elevator modernization and maintenance RFPs is out, and, uh, I've got my first appointment tomorrow to, to walk both floors of the elevator and, uh, get some interest on that, but if there's any questions, I'm happy to field those, unless they're technology-related.
Change that, uh, we'll get ready to move on to IP before we do this. We'll get ready to move on to IT before we do this.
Charlie. Eat that good head.
My expectations are far high.
Everybody else is a senior.
I'm sorry, Charlie.
I have to be just still on.
Oh, that's okay.
I'm starting to.
I'll try to get the chance to.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm happy to hear that.
I wanted to come and have John McEnroe.
She doesn't come.
Charlie.
Eat that good head.
My expectations are far high.
Everybody else is a senior.
I'm sorry, Charlie.
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 Email threats, there's firewall threats out there. The wireless upgrade that the board approved was huge because that was truly the biggest threat that the city seen with our technology being around 10 years old. Looking forward to the 2020 budget, the average age of our servers, like I stated, was about six, six and a half years old. So over the next three calendar years, we'll bring it to the board for approval to get all new servers replaced, increase our server storage. Along with that will be our main file system, file server, which we have scheduled to be replaced in 2022. The financial server encode, as Mike stated earlier, is scheduled for replacement in 2023. I think we're going to a new version. Incode to encode 10, is that right, Mike?
Uh, encode 10 is an option. There's actually several options there. There is a cloud version of the encode, which is version nine that we have now. There's absolutely nothing wrong with version nine. So we have some options there. We don't necessarily need to get into that right now, but there are several options when it comes to upgrading our financial and personal.
Okay. Again, looking down, looking at the future, just continue to be prepared for any and all coming changes that deal with other departments. As Kerry stated, with the new app that was coming in, it was kind of out of the blue. So working with Tyler to make sure we have the infrastructure to support that, just like Ron stated. I work with all the other city managers quite often to make sure from an IT standpoint, we have the capability to help them at any way that we can. Or if we need to make any changes, Mike and I will bring that to the board for approval. Some ongoing projects that we have, priority number one is disaster recovery. We've never had a true disaster recovery server that I know of. So the thought process is, and we have approval to purchase a server and house it over at Public Works, and that gives us the capability that if we're ever attacked inside, that off-site storage, if it was ever to completely be taken over by a hacker, we could, you know, be stood up in 72, around 72 hours because all of our storage would be housed, you know, outside of City Hall. We also have some small firewall switch upgrades that we'll be doing at parks and at the airports. We will continue to manage our IT services partner forward slash moving forward. The next, the big project that we have going on right now is our Office 365 renewal. We went out and recently got some quotes on that, so we'll be bringing that to the board this very next meeting for approval. Does anybody have any questions?
I'm Titans Dale Airport Manager, City of Ossage Beach. Just to give you guys a quick background, we have, including myself, six full-time employees between the two airports. We have two full-time at Grand Glaze, and we have three full-time at Lisi Fine, and then I float back and forth. And not to skip ahead, but on challenges, I'm kind of reminded, like Ron said, 2008, 2009, when things really got bad here at the lake, we whittled down our, our staff. And I foresee in the future, coming to you guys with maybe trying to get some part-time help during the summertime, during the season, these two airports are just, aren't the same airports that we saw 20, 25 years ago. We're starting to have a lot of traffic. For instance, at Grand Glaze right now, if, if I'm out floating around, if I happen to be at City Hall or at Lisi Fine, Grand Glaze has one person there a day. Friday's the only day that we cover up and we'll have two people there. So six days out of the seven days that we're open, we only have one person on the staff manning airport. And during these busy seasons, it, that could get kind of rough. Lisi Fine, since I have three guys out there and the way their schedules overlap, there's still three days out of the seven that there's only one person there unless I, unless I happen to be there, or if we have a person out that's sick. But anyway, our fuel cells are up. Even with COVID last year, we, we still had quite a bit of fuel cells. And this year, we've, we're already going to meet last year and the year before totals. We've been pretty busy so far. We started the janitorial service at both airports this year and have really helped the guys out a lot. And we've gotten a lot of comments already on, on the way the facilities look. As far as challenges go, basically, I mean, we're, generating revenue is, is our main goal, other than supplying services for the people of the community. But in order to do that, we need to sell fuel and we need to rent hangars. You know, things don't change much around the airport. That's what we're wanting to do, wanting to sell fuel, wanting to build hangars. It's been kind of, we've been trying to do some land leases where people could build their own private hangar at both airports. It's been quite a challenge with the Department of Natural Resources, naturally. We're going through a lot of red tape on that, but we're, we're always looking to investigate that further. And the other problem that I'm always challenged with is our aging equipment. And that goes anything from our fuel trucks. So I've got two fuel trucks at each airport. I've got a 1985 model. I've got through two 1988 models, and I got a new one that's a 1989 model. So when, when we're talking 65 to 70% of my revenue at these two airports come from those, those trucks, it's, I've been fortunate the last six or seven years to have some mechanically inclined employees that have helped keep things running. And also, a lot of things people don't think about is cutting grass. I'm in dire need of some mowers. You know, I hate to come to you guys and ask for money for equipment when we have big projects that roll around, big apron projects that cost over four and a half million dollars. You know, obviously, the city's not paying that full four and a half million dollars, but you're paying a good chunk of money there, and it's hard to get equipment. I've got 300 acres of grass to cut at Lisi Fine, and I've got 145 acres to cut at Grand Glaze. The summertime, we try to hire seasonal help, and I can keep two guys busy 40 hours a week during the summertime, just cutting grass, and that's it. So you'll probably be seeing some equipment requests as far as some, I'd like to get some commercial grass mowers like Matt had down at the parks. To my knowledge, we've never had really a, a commercial grade type mower. The trackers that we use right now, we use them as a mower, and we use them to move aircraft around. So sometimes you can turn into a conflict. You got an aircraft you got to move, well, you got to go flag down the, the guy that's on the mower and bring it back so we can move some aircraft around in the summertime. The other thing, as far as aging equipment, we have to keep in mind that Lisi Fine was built in 1959. Our jet and avgas fuel farm out there was built in 1959. So we, we've been dealing with a problem with, on the jet fuel side, the last year, we've had problems with the pump, and I've had three different companies look at it. But I think we're finally going to get that resolved here within the next week. But that's just another thing to keep in mind, that we've, we've got some old equipment out there that's, that's getting close to its useful life. Looking forward, the apron project at Lisi Fine is finally coming around. It took us a while to get the bid process. It's hopefully going to start in the next month or two. It'll probably roll over into 2022. Lisi Fine and Grand Glaze are both due for an overlay within the next, oh, three to four years at the most, probably. You guys will be seeing some grant applications and budgets for that in the coming years. And see, once again, on, ongoing research and that type of stuff. We're just always looking to, to generate more revenue. So I've got negotiations with different people that would like to build their own hangar. I probably get approached at least once a month on somebody wanting to build their own hangar. Lisi Fine is becoming a problem just because we have to deal with the Department of Natural Resources. But I think there's a lot of potential to be able to do that at Grand Glaze, too. So that's all I have. If anybody's got any questions.
Mr. Rupert, how was that electrical burial?
Oh, yeah, that's a, that's a project that we've had slated on our airport improvement plans. It's the power line off the, right next to the highway, off the end of the runway.
So it's coming overhead or something?
Yeah, yeah. We were wanting to bury that to improve some safety. That's another one of those, you know, when you go looking at MoDOT and FAA and how they score projects, when you're looking for funding and, and, you know, obstacle avoidance and safety, your big scores on that, so.
That would be something that you would vote for.
Yeah, yeah. Mm-hmm.
On, I believe it was Tuesday, we offered Nicole Stacey the parks manager position, and she accepted it. So she's three days in, and we're right in the middle of Little League, so I'm going to go through this today. Obviously, I'm right in the middle of, of training her, but we're excited to have Nicole on board. We think she's going to be a real asset, so. So the Parks Department. All right, so Parks Department, we, obviously, we have a full-time parks manager. It's a working parks manager. We have a recreational specialist, which is the position that Nicole previously held, so now that position is now open. We have two full-time park techs, and then we would love to have more seasonals, but right now, we have three. So we could use as many as seven for two to three months out of the year, but sometimes that's difficult to, to have happen. So I'll just go through everything here. I'll start with successes. Just want to highlight B and C here. Park traffic is high, and all but a few weekends are booked with baseball or softball tournaments through mid-July. I really want to bring this to the board's attention because I don't think everybody truly understands just how many people we drive to the lake through these tournaments. The example I want to use right now is this weekend Nicole and I are preparing for a 56-team softball tournament, which will use all five fields at both parks. So that's, that's 12 to 15 kids per team, parents and sometimes grandparents for all 56 teams. So that's, that's bringing a lot of people to the lake, and that's not just Saturday and Sunday. This is a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday tournament. So they start tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM. The last game ends around 9:30, 10 o'clock on Sunday. So it is three days, plum full of baseball, with people all staying in hotels down, all throughout the city and the lake area. So that's, that's a, that's a huge success for us. We, we would love to, you know, we, I think there was only five weekends from the, from the beginning of April, well, I think it might have been less than that, until mid-July that we, that we didn't have a tournament booked. So they're not all that big, but, but that's all, that's good to have. The other success that I, that I want to mention here is C. We did get a grant. You may have seen, you may have seen it on Facebook. I can't remember if we put that on Facebook yet or not. But we did get a grant from Miller County Health Department for $17,000 late last year that we are using to purchase exercise equipment to add to, to the one piece that we already have around our track that goes around Peacock Park. So we're adding that as well later this summer. Challenges, I just want to, I just want to highlight C and D real quick because they're the most important in my mind. I already talked a little bit about it, but park staffing in the spring and early summer can be extremely challenging. I've lived that this year, so I can promise you that it is very challenging, and I know Nicole echoes what I say there. So we are looking, Nicole and I are going to look really hard at the staffing and see if there's a way that we can make some changes. We would love to add a third full-time park tech and kind of not hire as many seasonals. We think that would give us a lot more flexibility earlier in the year because it's just so hard to find them early in the year. That's something that we're going to be talking to Gina about and hopefully researching for future budgets. And then the rock wall behind the volleyball court is another thing that has been a huge challenge and it's huge eyesore. It's something we've been dealing with for, ever since we built it. That rock wall just, is just hard, it's been hard to stabilize. We do have money in the budget this year, and, and thanks, thanks to Rob and the Transportation Department, as they are helping us to stabilize and riprap that wall in their free time over the summer. The hope is, is that by the time we get to the end of the summer, we've got that all fixed and ready to go, and we can start expanding some of, some of the leagues and some of the things we do into, into sand volleyball. So that are the challenges. Looking ahead, you know, looking at maybe what's left this year and ahead to the 2022 budget and beyond, over the, over the next three years, '22, '23, '24, the fleet management document that I have shared with the board a number of times does have the park scheduled to replace one vehicle a year over those three years. We have, the park only has three vehicles. All three of those vehicles are in, in some form of disrepair. One of them, the park explorer is actually not running right now. We've got it at the shop trying to figure out what's going on with it. But the Parks Department, for what it's worth, has never had, they've always just got hand-me-downs from Public Works. And I'm not saying that we wouldn't take that again, but the ones that we have are hand-me-downs from five, six years ago. So we really, we really need to see something going on there. We're also looking at picnic table and portable mound replacement programs over the next couple of years. We're just looking at replacing six picnic tables a year for six years. And then the portable mounds, which are vital to these tournaments that we bring in, and having those, the ones that we have are, are going on five or six years old, and they're really starting to get beat up, and we'd like to replace those. Peacock Park, parking lot overlay is also coming a little further down the road. And as you know, we, we recently completed a couple of years ago, the new basketball court. So the old basketball court is prime property to add more parking. We have a tremendous problem with parking over at Peacock Park. If we have both fields full with parents and everything, we have people parking in the grass, we have people parking, you know, wherever they can find a place, and adding some parking, even if we were to turn into a gravel lot back there, would, would, would open up, well, I got the planner telling me no, but whatever, we need more parking. So, so that would, if we, if we could, if we could open that up and utilize that, I think that would, would solve some of our parking problems. And then I do want to just highlight the park entrance. I know we've had this on the agenda several times. It would be nice to beautify the front of our park and add, add some type of new gate. Our, our park is a dawn-to-dusk park. Currently, at dawn and at dusk, the police department go down and they lock the gate for us seven days a week, 365 days a year. If we were to go to some kind of automatic, you know, open, we could set those on timers, we could, we could find some efficiencies there. And then, last but not least, on looking at budget, and I know we've, I've talked about this with Richard and a couple of other aldermen, but the Park Master Plan that was done back in the early 2000s, we've, we've deviated from that over the years multiple times. It's a document that looks great on the wall. It's not a document that, that we can really use to continue to expand at the park because we've, we've put stuff in different places than, than what the plan called for over the years. So an updated Park Master Plan sometime in the next few years would certainly help drive staff direction as we move forward and try and find ways to improve community services through the Parks Department. Ongoing research and projects, we also are in the, we had started underground cable burying early last year at Peacock Park as part of a requirement that we have through the Land and Water Conservation Fund. You guys may or may not know, but that park was originally given to us by the, by the state. It was originally built with Land and Water Conservation Fund money through them. When they gave it to us, that passed to us. We've used that grant even further to build the, the basketball court, the new playground. So one of their requirements is the underground burial. We started that project, and then it abruptly stopped because of COVID. We need to get back on that project and get that finished. And then the last two things I want to highlight are just about Hatchery Road. Hatchery Road, right underneath the 54 overpass, is really starting to get some storm drain damage, the road. It's, it's right up to the fog line now, and we'd really like to, to see some improvement, at least in that area. And then the park road beyond the baseball field, you know, several years ago, we had a great idea to use the millings to, to, to put, you know, instead of gravel, to kind of fill in that road, and it worked great for a long time. But what has happened over time is those millings have hardened. And so now, instead of a gravel road, we have a hard, rough, kind of a crowned road. Potholes appear quite quickly. Our staff try to fill them with sand or gravel, but because we put those millings down, it just ends up all washing away. And so something really needs to be done about that road. And if you're not sure what I'm talking about, basically, it goes from, it starts right at the end of the ball fields where the playgrounds is, and goes all the way down to the maintenance shed, all along the, the three soccer fields there. And again, the road is, is, we drive it every day, the, the road works, but it is truly a mess. I would challenge any of you to go down and just drive it. It, it is hard. It is now raised and somewhat crowned. So that's, that's somewhat of an issue. Other than that, just really excited to have Nicole on board. This means that I will get to go back to my real office here at City Hall. Some of you might not realize this, but I left that office on July 31st of 2020, and maybe in a week or so, I'll be headed back there full-time. So I won't be so hard to find anymore here coming up, so. But any questions about the Park Department, myself and Nicole are happy to answer them.
Have you guys commented here about pond drainage? I don't know. You want to discuss that?
Right. So one of the things that I noticed right away when I got over to the park full-time about a, about a month and a half ago-ish, was we had some seeping right in the middle of the parking lot below the pond. And I, and I, you know, for a while, I think, you know, it's very rainy, so a while, okay, well, it's probably just rain. Well, the rain would stop and the seeping would continue. So we started looking into it a little bit. We've always known that the pond has, leaks a little bit. If you go down below the, the berm there, along the edge of the parking lot, there is constantly water there. We did not realize that it had started to go underneath that parking lot, but according to our engineers, it has. We do have a, a pretty simple fix for the drainage issue. We're going to be installing drain tile along the berm, along the bottom of that berm, and, and lead it all the way down to that creek where, where the pond drains there, and that should fix the problem. Unfortunately, it's probably already started to affect the subgrade of that parking lot. I don't know off the top of my head. I know we replaced it after the flood, but I don't know exactly what year that was. But that parking lot will probably fail way before we originally thought it would because of this problem. That's not necessarily an immediate problem right now. The parking lot's fine right now. We, we hope that once we, we put this drain tile in, you know, we'll be watching it closely to make sure that that seeping stops that's in the parking lot, and then just uses the drain tile to kind of drain down to the creek. Any other questions?
Guys, just a real quick, how was that electrical burial?
Oh, yeah, that's a, that's a project that we've had slated on our airport improvement plans. It's the power line off the, right next to the highway, off the end of the runway.
So it's coming overhead or something?
Yeah, yeah. We, we were wanting to bury that to improve some safety. That, that's another one of those, you know, when you go looking at MoDOT and FAA and how they score projects, when you're looking for funding and, and, you know, obstacle avoidance and, and safety, your big scores on that, so.
That would be something that you would vote for.
Yeah, yeah. Mm-hmm.
On, I believe it was Tuesday, we offered Nicole Stacey the parks manager position, and she accepted it. So she's three days in, and we're right in the middle of Little League, so I'm going to go through this today. Obviously, I'm right in the middle of, of training her, but we're excited to have Nicole on board. We think she's going to be a real asset, so.
Thank you.
So the Parks Department. All right, so Parks Department, we, obviously, we have a full-time parks manager. It's a working parks manager. We have a recreational specialist, which is the position that Nicole previously held, so now that position is now open. We have two full-time park techs, and then we would love to have more seasonals, but right now, we have three. So we could use as many as seven for two to three months out of the year, but sometimes that's difficult to, to have happen. So I'll just go through everything here. I'll start with successes. Just want to highlight B and C here. Park traffic is high, and all but a few weekends are booked with baseball or softball tournaments through mid-July. Want to, I really want to bring this to the board's attention because I don't think everybody truly understands just how many people we drive to the lake through these tournaments. The example I want to use right now is this weekend Nicole and I are preparing for a 56-team softball tournament, which will use all five fields at both parks. So that's, that's 12 to 15 kids per team, parents and sometimes grandparents for all 56 teams. So that's, that's bringing a lot of people to the lake, and that's not just Saturday and Sunday. This is a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday tournament. So they start tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM. The last game ends around 9:30, 10 o'clock on Sunday. So it is three days, plum full of baseball, with people all staying in hotels down, all throughout the city and the lake area. So that's, that's a, that's a huge success for us. We, we would love to, you know, we, I think there was only five weekends from the, from the beginning of April, well, I think it might have been less than that, until mid-July that we, that we didn't have a tournament booked. So they're not all that big, but, but that's all, that's good to have. The other success that I, that I want to mention here is C. We did get a grant. You may have seen, you may have seen it on Facebook. I can't remember if we put that on Facebook yet or not. But we did get a grant from Miller County Health Department for $17,000 late last year that we are using to purchase exercise equipment to add to, to the one piece that we already have around our track that goes around Peacock Park. So we're adding that as well later this summer. Challenges, I just want to, I just want to highlight C and D real quick because they're the most important in my mind. I already talked a little bit about it, but park staffing in the spring and early summer can be extremely challenging. I've lived that this year, so I can promise you that it is very challenging, and I know Nicole echoes what I say there. So we are looking, Nicole and I are going to look really hard at the staffing and see if there's a way that we can make some changes. We would love to add a third full-time park tech and kind of not hire as many seasonals. We think that would give us a lot more flexibility earlier in the year because it's just so hard to find them early in the year. That's something that we're going to be talking to Gina about and hopefully researching for future budgets. And then the rock wall behind the volleyball court is another thing that has been a huge challenge and it's a huge eyesore. It's something we've been dealing with for, ever since we built it. That rock wall just, is just hard, it's been hard to stabilize. We do have money in the budget this year, and, and thanks, thanks to Rob and the Transportation Department as they are helping us to stabilize and riprap that wall in their free time over the summer. The hope is, is that by the time we get to the end of the summer, we've got that all fixed and ready to go, and we can start expanding some of, some of the leagues and some of the things we do into, into sand volleyball. So that are the challenges. Looking ahead, you know, looking at maybe what's left this year and ahead to the 2022 budget and beyond, over the, over the next three years, '22, '23, '24, the fleet management document that I have shared with the board a number of times does have the park scheduled to replace one vehicle a year over those three years. We have, the park only has three vehicles. All three of those vehicles are in, in some form of disrepair. One of them, the park explorer is actually not running right now. We've got it at the shop trying to figure out what's going on with it. But the, the Parks Department, for what it's worth, has never had, they've always just got hand-me-downs from Public Works. And I'm not saying that we wouldn't take that again, but the ones that we have are hand-me-downs from five, six years ago. So we really, we really need to see something going on there. We're also looking at picnic table and portable mound replacement programs over the next couple of years. We're just looking at replacing six picnic tables a year for six years. And then the portable mounds, which are vital to these tournaments that we bring in, and having those, the ones that we have are, are going on five or six years old, and they're really starting to get beat up, and we'd like to replace those. Peacock Park, parking lot overlay is also coming a little further down the road. And as you know, we, we recently completed a couple of years ago, the new basketball court. So the old basketball court is prime property to add more parking. We have a tremendous problem with parking over at Peacock Park. If we have both fields full with parents and everything, we have people parking in the grass, we have people parking, you know, wherever they can find a place, and adding some parking, even if we were to turn it into a gravel lot back there, would, would, would open up, well, I got the planner telling me no, but whatever, we need more parking. So, so that would, if we, if we could, if we could open that up and utilize that, I think that would, would solve some of our parking problems. And then I do want to just highlight the park entrance. I know we've had this on the agenda several times. It, it would be nice to beautify the front of our park and add, add some type of new gate. Our, our park is a dawn-to-dusk park. Currently, at dawn and at dusk, the police department go down and they lock the gate for us seven days a week, 365 days a year. If we were to go to some kind of automatic, you know, open, we could set those on timers, we could, we could find some efficiencies there. And then, last but not least, on looking at budget, and I know we've, I've talked about this with Richard and a couple of other aldermen, but the Park Master Plan that was done back in the early 2000s, we've, we've deviated from that over the years multiple times. It, it's a document that looks great on the wall. It's not a document that, that we can really use to continue to expand at the park because we've, we've put stuff in different places than, than what the plan called for over the years. So an updated Park Master Plan sometime in the next few years would certainly help drive staff direction as we move forward and try and find ways to improve community services through the Parks Department. Ongoing research and projects, we also are in the, we had started underground cable burying early last year at Peacock Park as part of a requirement that we have through the Land and Water Conservation Fund. You guys may or may not know, but that park was originally given to us by the, by the state. It was originally built with Land and Water Conservation Fund money through them. When they gave it to us, that passed to us. We've used that grant even further to build the, the basketball court, the, the new playground. So one of their requirements is the underground burial. We started that project, and then it abruptly stopped because of COVID. We need to get back on that project and get that finished. And then the last two things I want to highlight are just about Hatchery Road. Hatchery Road, right underneath the 54 overpass, is really starting to get some storm drain damage, the road. It's, it's right up to the fog line now, and we'd really like to, to see some improvement,
Last year, I was even getting calls at home from people, can I park on the shoulder of 42? It's like, no.
I'm just saying, that was, it was a lot of, they'll look at the basketball court and they try to add some holes to correct some of the parking. I just don't know.
I have heard, and I don't know if we've had any larger tournaments like this one since then.
This is the.
We have another one in July. It's GMB and it's a four-day tournament as well. So I'm expecting the same amount of teams to be here. So I don't know if we can put no parking, you know, like in just city, they would put up no parking along the road to prevent that. If that's something we can put in little stakes and say no parking to help, I could have guys to, our short amount of guys to help us do that too, so.
You know, I know with budget conscious, I get that. And I know that parking and parking facilities are expensive, but it's something that we require of everyone else. And I think all of you stay on opposite side of the city should be willing to accept to it. And the parking out of the park has always been a good start for mine. And here it numbers like fifty six teams, because I have part of the place of tournaments. Fifty six teams, a lot of people, because you'll have all, the fields will have two teams a piece, plus you have at least two teams waiting on each field and everybody that goes with them. And that's a lot of cars, you know, and I just don't want to see us get caught in a trap not having ADA requirements to that and things like that. So it's just a one great afterthought.
Yeah, thank you, Kerry, because that just drives it home a little bit more. Parking is a serious issue at both parks, probably a little bit more so at Penic than it is at City Park, just because we have more ground. Now, it might not, might not be paved ground, but we do have more ground where they can park, whereas at Penic, it has been a problem in the past. Any other questions?
There's also a soccer tournament going on that day too, on Saturday.
It's a great economic development opportunity, but it also provides certain challenges that, you know, some will need to be addressed. Matt did a great job in working with different, you know, organizations to build up these tournaments. And so we'll go back and discuss that. One of the issues on Penic is, you know, the opportunity of making that sidewalk, you know, down 42 to the high school and then working out there with the high school to park, on the park, you know, to, you know, the sidewalk, you know, to have people actually walk over to the games. So, so, but they consider to, to within their sidewalk. Okay, anything else? Now let's move on. George, Kevin.
Thank you. I am Kevin Crooks, the Public Works Operations Manager. Been on staff here for about a month. Public Works metrics, as far as success or failure, there's dozens of them, but basically you'll know them when you see them and they're largely pass fail. Largely, those three main ones are delivery, safe potable water, aesthetically pleasant water, conveyance of, collection of wastewater, and the maintenance of roadways, street signs, street lights, traffic cabinets, and stormwater conveyance, et cetera. The overall challenge is the, is shifting the priority or shifting the workflow, basically, of operations at Public Works from one that is largely reactionary to one that is preventative. And we're real close in doing that and due to our staffing levels, they're near about where they should be. They're, we're very close. We're very close to where we need to be to shift into a more preventive operation than what we have done in the past here at Osage Beach. So what I've done here is combinated a combination of successes, challenges, and other points of interest into basically one laundry list that I'll run through. So at the PW physical campus, we're working with Cochrane currently to explore a new Public Works, call it a building, which would incorporate a wash bay. The reason for the wash bay is getting the vehicles inside is one part of it, but the other part of it is actually physically cleaning the salt, grime, dirt, mud off the vehicles to properly maintain them. Just getting them indoors is just half of the battle as far as vehicle maintenance. And along with that, we just need, I believe, to make a building that's not for June 2021, but to build for 10 years in the future is to have a mechanics workspace. I've heard a lot of discussions here today about mechanics and vehicle maintenance, and to do that, you need a dedicated mechanical workspace. So at the very least, some light maintenance can can be done and performed and have, you know, adequate space for tires, you know, headlamps, et cetera, et cetera. We don't currently have that. What we currently have in Public Works is the Streets Department does a lot of, a lot of PMing, they do a lot of in-house vehicle work, but it's ad hoc at best and the conditions aren't, don't lend themselves well to actual mechanical work. And then also, we're exploring the possibility of gas pumps in that building as well. The last time I checked, we're, you know, we're paying retail for gasoline. So if we bought gasoline in bulk and we had our own pump, our own distribution site, we'd roughly save 35 cents a gallon. That adds up. And that's the police department, that's diesel that we burn through like crazy in every snow and ice event, et cetera. So that's underway. Also at Public Works, this is part of the conversation that Alderman Ross brought up about area 51. The area upstairs, what we call the mezzanine, which had a mold mitigation issue. The phase two of that project, staff will come from Public Works to the board in the fall to review two options as they're laid out for bid. One is to remove all the affected mold, ceiling tiles, and I think we're just talking about ceiling tiles in most part, and leave that space as it is. Just make it safe to habitate, to use as storage for documents, or as a bid alternate to remove all ceiling tiles and remodel two spaces, two rooms, one for map storage and one for a joint PW training room. Moving on to the Water Department, there's currently four full-time employees. Some of the things they're going to be working on this summer are pressure reducing and altitude valve station preventative maintenance. That type of infrastructure is typically inspected and rebuilt every four years. As I understand it, it hasn't been done over a decade, so I've made that a priority for them. Also a towers mixers project, which is just what it sounds. It's, it's putting stainless steel mixers into our water towers in the same way that a, like a, and a fan in a room turns the air over. These mixers would turn the water over. It breaks up the thermal stratification that naturally happens inside water towers and mixes the ages of the water and also promotes good water quality and good chlorine residual distribution throughout the water distribution system. I've put those in before and they're not, they can be done in-house. It's not too complicated or technical. I see autocorrect got me here. The new Swiss well village number three, that was just Doug, which is our seventh well, which I think was completed in 2020, correct, Mike? Yep. Exceptional quality, exceptional quality well. We're getting really good results from that. The iron, the soluble iron in that well is low. I can't quantify it yet because I don't have the equipment. The manganese level of that well is low, so that's the good news. We're leaning on that one hard and due to its high quality, so that's the good news. Three of the seven wells in the city's inventory will mechanically and electrically inspected in 2021 under contract and will, over the years, work our way through the entire inventory to make sure the wells are going to be there when we need them, obviously. Also in the Water Department, we're going to start working on hydrant painting. That's what will be done by FTE, supported by inmates as available, which I think is going to be in July. We're going to start on the Parkway, high-traffic commercial areas and et cetera and work our way into neighborhoods eventually. We're going to kick off a fall citywide hydrant flushing, that's every hydrant. Again, as, as I understand it, that's never been done in the city. What the, what the Water Department does is do a number of spot flushings, they know the troubled areas, and they spend their time chasing the iron and manganese complaints around. But what we're going to do is a holistic, entire city flush in fall. And with that, we will gain a number of attributes that we can put into our GIS system, including hydrant type, hydrant make, year of the hydrant, so forth, and a static pressure reading that we can use and place into GIS or rather at Public Works, we can, that's a lot of information we need that we don't have. Water staff's installed over 180 meters in the last 45 days. They've really been, really been breaking on that. There's a new backend software program coming for a water meter reading system from Neptune and that will enhance billing and reading and will assist billing department with customer complaints and assist us in troubleshooting when we get a call from a resident who kind of, shall we say, disagrees with their water reading, with their bill. And we have a new FTE position now posted for the Water Department, which will bring us to five. Moving to the Sewer Department, you know, really the 800-pound gorilla, as far as the Sewer Department goes in the city, is the pressure sewer system. We have, what I understand is the second largest pressure system in the entire United States. And to say that that is a labor draw is a vast, vast understatement. So really, a lot of what Public Works does, especially what the Sewer Department does, revolves around trying to maintain that system of over 15, roughly 1,500 stations. I say roughly because honestly, we don't have a hard, accurate count of all the stations that are in our inventory. We come across them all the time, where they're not even in inventory. It's just that kind of system. And so as far as challenges goes, that's way, way up on the list. So in the Sewer Department, we've got a new odor control chemical called Alkagen, which is a chemical feed system that is going to be installed in odor control system at Sands in late June. We're accommodating the electrical requirements for that as I speak. And then with that, about this odor control, we are, I am also starting a, what I'll call an irrigation study to try and get away from odor control because it's excessively expensive. The chemicals are expensive, the feed equipment is expensive. And the way I plan on doing that is adding oxygen to these stagnant stations that, we're going to start with Sands Lift Station and those lift stations that feed it, adding dissolved oxygen, trying to make basically the anaerobic conditions. The sanitary sewer there is, the sewerage is old, it's black, it's without, it's devoid of any dissolved oxygen. And in that condition, you gas off H2S, which is the main offender as far as offensive odor. So if you can reintroduce dissolved oxygen into anaerobic conditions and make them aerobic, you basically stabilize the wastewater into what I call fresh wastewater. The other angle, I have another couple other angles of attack, but at the same time, we're installing this new feed system, I'm also trying to divorce ourselves of odor control altogether, and so that's ongoing. The Sands Lift Station Rehab, which has been, is ongoing today, is 70% complete as of today, as of next Friday. The install will be done as far as check valves, base elbows, new guide piping, and one brand-new 100-horse motor and one rebuilt 100-horse motor, 200-horse, two 200-horse motors, and they will be dropped in the following Friday and we'll call that station good. One of the, the largest stations we have in inventory. As far in terms of personnel, Public Works is, it's new, it's green for the most part. And so we're addressing that with some in-house sewer pump rebuild training. We lost that skill set and all of the turnover we've had in recent years, and we're going to bring that back. We're bringing a pump company in to do a one-day class. So we can rebuild primarily two-horse power grinders, which is the bulk of our, the bulk of our motors out there. In the last 30 days, we've had 32 callouts in the lift station department. We've had six SSOs, which is an industry term, simply meaning a sewer spill, sanitary sewer overage. We've had six of those. But I can tell you, as I sit here, I guarantee you, there's those that are spilling right now, we don't know it. That's the nature of the system. And then with that, trying to tackle that issue of lift stations that are, we rely on the, the citizens to tell us basically that, hey, there's a flashing light on this panel, does that mean something? Well, that's okay to a point. However, there are stations that are in the middle of the woods that only a squirrel and a deer are going to see. So I just came across one last week that was probably been spilling about six months, I guess. And so we're trying to tackle that and inventory those stations that aren't physically visible by the citizens and maybe set them up with a cellular communications protocol where it will dial us. And again, we haven't even quantified all those stations yet. That's ongoing. Along with that, there's a lift station ID project that I've kind of got kicked off and we're possibly going to be renaming these stations in a, in a way that makes more sense. There's really no real, there's no rhyme or reason to many of the, how the stations are numbered. And then if we do rename them or if we don't, we're going to put in retro reflective tags on every single station because they're currently written in Sharpie. So when the citizen calls, they don't know, they're, most of these stations have no physical street address, so it's, well, if you hang a right from this street and you go down this way, there's a lot of that. So it creates more confusion. Or we'll get calls like this, it'll be, well, I'm at this address and I see a light flashing across the bay. Well, there's four stations across the bay. So you've got a sewer personnel who's responding at 3:00 AM, going up and down streets, trying to figure out what station that could be. I want to try and end that. And there's a GS solution involved in that too, once we get those stations tagged and renamed, to make the, a searchable unique ID for each individual station to minimize the call-out time. In the same way, the police and fire, they don't mess around, they've got good software in their vehicles, they know where they're going, we don't. And that's going to change. The new Jetter truck has been used heavily, it was a great add to the inventory and it's a much better tool than what we had previously. We rely heavily on that already. Replacement items, the Operations Manager Ford Explorer truck is scheduled for replacement.
Kevin has a typo, it's 2022.
2022.
Not 2022.
Very good. And then with that, the 1996, which is our small sewer truck, sewer pumper truck, also scheduled for replacement 2022. Camera truck purchase is, research is ongoing and I'm already kind of throwing cold water on that. The problem with the sewer camera truck is that it requires two FTEs to operate. So that's wonderful if we find the funding, grant money, whatever it is, you've got $160,000 van, trailer, however it's configured, that will sit there because we don't have adequate I don't know if that's going anywhere. Our money could be better spent potentially, let me just put it there. The sewer assessment in Margaritaville area begins next Monday with Cochrane Engineering and that project was majority grant funded and we're looking forward to that. We know there's issues there. Cochrane's going to come in and identify them. And again, with the Sewer Department, as I mentioned, they're green, they're impressive, they have great potential, but there's a large amount of continuing industry training that needs to happen in the Sewer Department to include CDL licenses, safety, and general collections, operations knowledge, and that will come to the forefront this year and next year. Moving on to the Streets Department with seven.
Can I just make one correction? Corner and Shipper Institute, the Tansera project, not Cochrane. So, sorry about that.
No, thanks for that correction. Yeah, and a new employee started today, as a matter of fact, in Sewer Department, which brings the FTEs to seven. And one new FTE position is posted, which will ultimately bring us to eight, which gets us closer to that magic position where we move from reactive to preventative. So in the Streets Department, we have seven FTEs to include one new hire that will start the 28th. Streets Department has led the way, they really are the bedrock at Public Works. There are a lot of what I call grizzled veterans who know what they're doing. We have good retention in the Streets Department and they have a teams-based culture, teamwork, taking delivery of new message boards. That, that purchase was about $31,000, I just found out, and they're sitting outside being sun-baked as I speak, so kind of circles back to the issue of storing equipment inside. We're going to make room for those because I want them inside, I don't want them beat up. And so we're going to get them inside somewhere or another. Streets Department has done well in maintaining Osage Beach Parkway consistently clean and well-presented. Banners are another discussion, may move forward with some more banner replacements this year. Some of them are looking good and the other ones next to them are pretty rough. Discussion for another time. Streets Department has also done a lot of good stopgap for the Parks Department. They filled in for two months of really extensive interim mowing done for the Parks Department, as well as assisting with their volleyball court issues and the earth and dam drainage project that you talked about that was affecting the parking lot to the parking lot's detriment. And their, that project is underway as well. We're pricing off the purchase of just a basic plate compactor to minimize poor compaction problems that we've had in asphalt. They, with. problems that we've had in asphalt. They, without proper compaction, you're going to see a dip, a valley, and a cut-in, whether it be a water repair, sewer repair, whatever it is, a culvert. It's just, it's just how you do business. You've got to have proper compaction. We don't have the equipment for that. That's a level, it's a small item, three thousand dollars or so, and it'll get us to where we need to be there. Street department's improved access more than fifty sewer department access roads. These are easement roads to lift stations. They're in the middle of a retro reflective sign improvement project that's ongoing. All of the parkway should be completed in twenty twenty-one, and they'll move on from there. Streets department's been assisting, again, as I mentioned before, with a lot of this vehicle maintenance. Everything they can do in-house, they will do, and that saves us quite a bit of money in Public Works. The budget for Public Works equipment maintenance has been hit hard this last year with the cold snap. The aging fleet's been beat up quite a bit. So there's a real good potential that a budget amendment may be likely in the year to keep that fleet moving. And back to employee personnel issue, the, a new employee starts June twenty-eighth, not the June twenty-second. And that will, again, bring us to the seven FTEs that I have listed. Any questions in regards to any of those issues or anything with Public Works?
Just a quick comment I want to add to what Kevin said there. In the transportation department, we are also budgeted to have part-time and a seasonal, which we are also, which I think we also have out.
Those are being posted, yep.
To add a few more bodies in the summer to help. So budget positions are not, I swear to God.
Thank you.
Questions?
Comment, Gina? The agenda for the retreat, I had a, I had a note there with myself, but it was just brought up again and I continue to hear, we're not replacing the fleet, we've got a whole fleet, of course, more, just more, I might have a comment on that. But I'd like to have a discussion specifically about our backup.
You want to ask?
I didn't have a question, just a comment. This is overwhelming information. It's a lot to digest.
Good job.
But I wanted to commend you on some of the areas you brought up that my mind never would have gone to, such as the reflective, or basically putting rhyme or reason to all the stations and making them easier accessible for not only your staff and fleets, but people in the community would know exactly what we're talking about, where something's located, if there's an issue, calling in, et cetera. But anyway, a lot of interesting information I never would have wrapped my head around.
In particular, they knew.
Yeah.
Yes, well done.
Thank you.
Kudos.
Thank you.
So does this mean we're fully staffed in the sewer? What if this new person is fully started? One short, still one short, one short? We have seven, we're still seven. All right. I commend you for the innovation that different ways of looking at things. I don't know what the numbers were tracking, but I think there is an opportunity to, for us to bring maintenance of our vehicles and processes in house.
Absolutely.
I did not mention that during previous years. There will be some financial modeling to ensure that that makes sense.
I think it does, and we can show that. That's in its infancy, but I absolutely agree with you. It's cost-effective because we're, you know, we're going to precision tune, we're going to, you know, tire and autos to replace tires. I mean, we're paying a premium. I think it'd be shown that there is cost savings to be had there.
Okay, assuming that it includes my fleet.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, with an FTE mechanic, absolutely. There's no reason why we couldn't.
All right, anything else?
Thank you.
Gina?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
You can skip them.
Everybody else use mine. We can ask Mike to put it off.
So this is, this is, I combined assistant city administrator with engineering. And this will go quick, I promise, chief, and then you can get started. Successes, just going to highlight a couple. I really want to highlight D and E. You guys can read through those other ones, some of those are not as important as D and E. Cochrane's done a really nice job assisting us with clearing old projects. The example I use in here is Rin Lane. It's one that's been on the books for several years. Obviously, that project starts on June twenty-first, it's already been approved by the board, it's a sixty-day project, it'll be done in August. So we're glad to have that one off the books. There are several others, but that's a true success. We've had some of these projects on the books forever. So we're really happy to get those off of the books. And then the other success is, I think, just the teamwork that staff and the board has had as it revolves around the preventative maintenance, preventative pavement maintenance program, and the sidewalk master plan. I know the sidewalk master plan hasn't been approved yet, but I know it's been presented to you guys. These documents, as Gina points out to me all the time, provide us with a roadmap. They allow us to be more proactive than, than reactive as we have been in years past when, when we approach projects. And, you know, that just, just gives us a roadmap, makes it easier for us to budget stuff, makes it easier for us to provide the information to you when we have those things approved. So that's great. Challenges, you know, I do have several here, but the number one challenge that I think we have is updating our water and sewer master plan. Gina said to this to me multiple times, but the master plans that we have, we've done everything in those plans. There's really nothing left for us to do in the existing water and sewer master plans. I know we've talked a lot about updating master plans. Well, this is another one that we, that we really need to get updated so that we can have that same direction that we have with that pavement maintenance plan and that sidewalk plan moving forward for water and sewer.
Specifically, the sewer is not necessarily the sewer master plan, but the SDC ordinance and SDC, our SDC ordinance. I don't want to get the lease out, that could be a whole evening. By ordinance, I have to update the order next month anyway on the SDC sewer development charge. So when I said that we've done everything, that was that plan.
Thank you. Just look, going on to twenty twenty-two budget and beyond, I have listed the projects that we're working on this year, kind of goes down to, down through E. You know, we all know the ledge is just kind of at a standstill. Autumn Lane, you know, is at a standstill as we, as we kind of try to figure out the easement issues. And then beyond that is really, you know, the, the planning for future years. We all know industrial road right-of-way and construction is coming in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Gina is spearheading the parkway extension, construction, engineering and construction, and obviously that has a grant attached to it. So we know, you guys have seen those emails, you know the schedule for that. The Tantera sewer assessment is going to generate a lot of projects. It's going to generate a lot of improvements over the next few years in the Tantera area to that sewer system. There's, there's no sugarcoating this. We, it's the, it's the worst of our sewer system in the city. They're going to find problems. We're going to spend a lot of money out in Tantera fixing those problems on a, on a project-by-project basis. The, the existing preventative pavement maintenance plan and the proposed new sidewalk plan, again, guide, direct staff, and, and those documents will be used for budgeting in the future, as, as you guys know. Ongoing research, this is really just a hodgepodge of all the different research projects that I am involved in in some form or fashion. You know, obviously, I've got, I've got two new managers underneath me that are still, I'm still helping, training, helping, getting them acclimated to Osage Beach purchasing policies, getting them acclimated to all of the different programs that we use. Obviously, I'm also the city's purchasing agent, so I'm also involved in almost all major purchases. And, and even if it's not in my department, I'm always there to help a department manager. I love to do it. I have no problem doing it. I do it all the time. Let's see, what else do I got here? Grant opportunities, I'm also usually right in the middle of any grant opportunities that we have, do a lot of the grant work. I know Gina has helped me tremendously while I've been out and about on my walkabout to various departments. So she's kind of helped quite a bit with a lot of those. Those are pretty much the highlights. I've got a lot more stuff there. If anybody has any specific questions concerning engineering or concerning my job that they want to ask about, I'm here to answer them.
Questions? Could it be none? Or they need to help me? We're ready to move on, chief.
Todd Davis, I'm police chief for Osage Beach. For those who don't know, police department consists of basically four departments. Emergency management, ambulance, nine-one-one center, and then of course, the police department. Currently, we're slated to have forty-five full-time employees when we're at full staff, and then nine to twelve part-time employees is what we have. I'll kind of start out with emergency management and just kind of go down. Our accomplishments for emergency management this year, or this past year, we established a biannual inspection program to ensure all the storm sirens are operational and ready throughout the year. We used to do that one time a year, and we would ultimately always find something wrong in between. So we've got a good, good program, they're checked twice a year, and then the second, then they come back and do our, any maintenance that's needed, found. We've seen our costs kind of decrease by doing this, instead of waiting until we have a major issue, kind of like we had with the ants and the, the thing, and in the control box and have to replace everything. We've started a bug spraying, or pest control service at each siren monthly, or quarterly, I'm sorry. And we haven't had any more issues with that. We're also, I'm more involved with the Camden County LEPC, the Local Emergency Planning Commission, to find out what resources and everything that we can, that's out there that we're able to use in, in case we ever have an issue. Myself and Alderman Rucker sit on that commission, committee. You know, that kind of came into play when we had the Kings Plaza event. They were on the phone with me as, before I even got on scene, I was en route to see what was going on and ask them if we needed any resources and reaching out to us to see what kind of help. It's all about those partnerships. Future goals for the emergency management department, we're, really the only thing we have that we're planning is possibility of moving the topsider storm siren. It sits right in the middle of their project, so they're wanting it moved. We've been working with our vendor, and we do have some locations for that. Ultimately, that's going to be reimbursed to the city by the project if, if we need to do any, or if they choose to do so. So that, that's pretty much it on that. Just an update, kind of, we added a new siren a couple of years ago out on KK in preparation for the entire Mitchell project that was out there that's, so to serve that area a little bit better. They were right on the cusp of the, the area that, that the lazy days and Nichols Road siren would serve. So we wanted to make sure that area had full coverage. So any questions on emergency management? Okay. Ambulance, over the last year, they upgraded their department protocols, which by changing some of that stuff, has reduced our drug costs and some of the medical supplies, which helps reduce the overall budget for the ambulance. Our future goals, continue to fill the vacancies that we have in the department. Currently, we have one full-time paramedic position open. I know this is kind of the elephant in the room that nobody wants to talk about, is replace the two thousand and ten ambulance during this next budget year. We kind of moved it up on the asset plan. The, that, that particular unit has been rather costly last year. It doesn't get used as often because it does not include a, or it doesn't, it's not equipped with a power cot and power loading system. So we choose to use the new ambulance that we purchased in fifteen that has that. So I, I think part of the problem with that unit is, is it sits downstairs and doesn't get used. So whenever they do have to move into it, it usually has a maintenance issue about the time we have to, to switch over to it. Then we have, time has come around to replace our cardiac monitors. And the other thing they're going to work toward is obtain certification to be recognized as a training entity, which means we can host classes and provide the CEUs for our own employees versus having to send them out to go to other locations. So. Any questions on the ambulance? Moving on to the nine-one-one center, accomplishments for the past year, we have updated the radio system to most win. That was something the board approved two years ago, I believe. In twenty twenty-two, we'll make our last payment on that whole radio system. That is both on police and the nine-one-one center. And I really want to praise those, praise the ladies and men and women in there that, they were able to stay operational the entire time with us being shorthanded, and even, we had a couple rounds of COVID go through there. And so we had some people working, you know, more days than they probably should have, but they kept us up and running. So they, you know, they're, they're the backbone in there to the patrol officers and everything else. So they, they do a great job. Future goals, plans for the communication center, upgrade our nine-one-one system. That is currently in progress. You, the board has approved that earlier this year. They're, they'll be on site, I believe, next, next month to start doing some of the pre-planning work. So we'll get that totally switched over. We've been working with HR, or HR and myself, or Lieutenant O'Day and myself, and one of the instructors at the LCTC up at Camden, we're working together to hopefully implement a nine-one-one operator training and certification program that will be held or conducted up at the LCTC. That will hopefully benefit us getting dispatchers and filling those positions. Again, continue to work towards filling the vacancies in the nine-one-one center. We currently have five, one communications supervisor, and four communications officers. We have bi-weekly testing, and we do testing and interviews the same day to try to move that process along quickly. We want to still continue to work towards attracting other agencies to do, in contract dispatch for revenue possibilities in the communication center. We feel that we're the top, you know, we have all the top-of-the-line equipment and everything in there, and we think we can serve the area agency as well. This is something I've been talking to Michael about the last couple, or brought it up to him today. We'd like to add security cameras at both the airports and parks. We don't currently monitor anything at any of those locations. We do at Public Works, you know, especially the parks. There are several times down there that, you know, there may be only one person working a concession stand, and if something goes on down there, we're not going to know anything. But that's, that's going to be something that we need to work out with our server capacity and, you know, be able to hold all the video. And then next year, or, yeah, next budget year, we will need to update our digital recorder. That records all the phone lines and radio, radio traffic that comes through dispatch center. That's all I've got on that. Any questions on communications? And then we'll move to the police department. Just a little bit of stats. Last year, we responded, or took thirteen hun, or one thousand three hundred and eighty-five reports. This year, we're five hundred and ninety-eight year-to-date. That's up about twenty-seven from where we were at last year. But what we're seeing this year on the increase, the types of calls we're having, they're requiring more officers. So, you know, disturbance, we're, instead of sending maybe a zone car and the supervisor we're, instead of sending maybe a zone car and the supervisor, we're having to send the zone car and both, or both zone cars and the supervisor, sometimes even calling for mutual aid. Um, which by having to send everybody like that, it's not allowing us to be proactive. So that's kinda one of the challenges we're having being short-staffed right now. Um, we'd like to be a more proactive department. Right now, we're kinda on the cusp of being reactive. We're still being proactive when we can get there or when we have the downtime, but it's, that's kinda one of the challenges we're seeing right now. Um, we currently have eight vacancies in the police department, a detective, an SRO, sorry, I'm sorry, detective sergeant, an SRO, four police officers, one analyst and one department secretary. Um, we do have a lot of interviews and testing scheduled for next week. Um, we have eight police officer recruits that we're gonna be, um, interviewing next week that we, that, for our police officer recruit program that started. That's where we'll send them to the academy and pay them as an employee while we're doing so and pay for their academy. We have one police officer in the background stage, two SRO applicants to be interviewed next week and two police off, or no, I'm sorry, now it's today after I typed this, three police officer applicants to be test and interview next week as well. Um, so this is probably the best that we've had as far as applicants and for both, all those positions. Um, I think we're in a pretty good spot to be by the end of the year. Once we get the, if we, if we have two that we send to the academy and they'll be out by the end of the year. So we'll, we should be at full staff, I anticipate. I would, I, I like to say that by then. Um, so I, like I said, this is the best position I think we've been in as far as applicants in, in quite a while. Um, as far as budgeting for next year, um, our big purchase that we're looking at is body worn cameras. Um, that's something I feel we need to get implemented. Um, love to try to find the money for if you guys would be so gracious. Um, we are all, or I'm currently working on the body worn camera grant through the Department of Justice. It just opened up, uh, last week, closes on July twelfth. So, and the word that's out there is they've been pretty generous to agencies that are applying for that because that's something that, you know, is kinda being pushed down from the federal, federal level that they'd like to see all those implemented. So, um, I'm feeling pretty optimistic about that. Um, we, we'd like to continue our fleet rotation plan for the department. Like Ron said earlier, we've got our two vehicles in, we're just waiting for our equipment to come in. They're kinda backlogged on that. Um, along with that, we've downsized our fleet by two vehicles. So this year, not only are we getting rid of two vehicles that they replaced, those, um, we've downsized two more vehicles that'll be going out. Um, that list has kinda changed because we did just blow an engine in the Durango. So it shot. So we'll, it, it'd go as is and then we'll re, one of the ones we were taking out of service, we'll shift over to that. Uh, we would also like to upgrade the ALPR, our automated license plate reader. It's probably about ten years old now. Um, we've started to have a little bit of issues with it. So, um, that's something we hope to be able to find a grant. We, that's how we were able to obtain the one that we're currently using. Um, and we would also like to, this will go toward ma, giving us, allowing us to have more proactive time versus reactive time is put some, uh, have the capability of online reporting for certain crimes such as lost license plates, stolen, you know, something that was lost or stolen property, crimes that really don't take an op, wouldn't need an officer to go out and respond. If they could re, if they could, um, if there was a mean, some agencies have it and we've started some research, that they can go online, report all that and get generated a police report number and, you know, it, it goes on to the investigations bureau. The license plate would get entered into, the, the system is stolen, but it wouldn't take an officer to actually go out and respond to that. So, that's all I have. If you have any questions.
Yeah, please for information program. Um, how's it, how, how, how we do that again?
I did totally skip over the accomplishments and that was one of the accomplishments. Taser implementation, they, they were implemented. Um, I think we've had two uses of it, um, but one successful, one not. Um, it didn't, the probes didn't stick in the clothing. It was middle of winter and that's one of the downfalls to it. Um, our tasers are yellow, um, bright yellow. They're worn on the offside to have any, they require either a cross draw or you gotta come up with your weak hand, um, to hopefully alleviate any of the
The issues that
The issues that we're just, we just saw.
Anything else?
Yes, I've just got a hodgepodge of questions here. Uh, kinda go over everything you went through quick. Um, under the ambulances, you said replacing the cardiac monitors?
Yes, sir.
Is there issues with them or do they replace every so often?
They have a lifespan of about ten years and we're at ten years.
Okay. Um, the other item here was the digital recorder. You wanted to upgrade that or just completely replace it?
Upgrade our current one that we have.
Can you give us a little insight on what's the current issue or?
With the new systems that we have, um, we need a few more channels on it apparently, or not channels, capacity, I guess it would be storage. It's a server basically. So we would just need to upgrade the server to give us more space.
Okay. Um, back to the taser implementation. Uh, I know when we approved that, there was a training session?
Yes, sir.
But with new hires coming on board, how does that, do they have to schedule another training session for those people?
It, it all depends. If they have certification from their agency where they worked at previously or if they come from an academy that certifies them in the academy, that they can use that certification because it's basically, it is the same that what we do, we mirror, it's from taser.
Thinking ahead with newer employees and how we issue that they're certified with the correct training they need for these items?
Plus, we have to re-annually certify as well. So we get
My last item is not to put you on the spot because we hound on this all the time, but can you give us a quick rundown of the current staffing levels and the expected or anticipated staffing levels for each of these departments?
Current staffing on the ambulance, we have one full-time opening. We have six full-time and there's, or full staff would be six full-time. So we're short one person in the ambulance, one full-time employee. Um, nine one one center, we're short five full-time employees, the supervisor and four officers.
And we should be at what level?
Eleven.
Eleven. And the police department, we're at twenty-eight with twenty-five of those commissioned. We have two, two non-commissioned openings and six commissioned.
And can you go over what's, what's our staffing level should be?
Twenty-five total, twenty, twenty-five commissioned.
Total, eight short, but that's civilian and
Correct.
Okay. It does, it does.
Yeah.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks. That's one detective sergeant, one SRO and four patrol.
Anything else?
Hello. Okay, so, um, human resources and risk management. So I did, um, put out this and has a lot of information in it. I'm, um, not gonna go over everything that's in here. I'm just going over a couple of areas that are, I think that are some of the most important. I, the information that I put in there was hoping to get everybody, have everybody have a better understanding of where we were with our health and dental and, um, our, uh, retirement. Um, I'm gonna focus right now on recruitment, hiring and retention as well as risk management. So on this slide, I just wanted to point out there was a couple of areas I forgot to include in here that we've been doing is decreased our hiring process. We're really working on the hiring process. We do get a little by, uh, backlogged when we were doing our backgrounds. Um, we did actually get hiring process down to fifty-two days at one point. Um, the average for public entities right now is running around a hundred and nine to a hundred and nineteen days. So we are way, um, below that, but I do say that we do creep up sometimes and get up to the sixty-two to seventy-five once in a while. Um, again, that, majority of that time is through our background process. Um, we did add the applicant texting, which seems to be, um, going over very well. Um, we added holidays. We added the president's and the Christmas Eve holiday and then the added an additional one percent for four oh one matching. I did put the numbers in there. I will tell you, I just did a quick thing for twenty twenty-one and we have seventy-five employees right now that are working for us and seventy-one are participating in our four fifty-seven. So. So you can skip that. That's just the same as what's in there. Okay, so on the turnover. Um, I just kinda wanted to give you a little bit of upgrade of, update of the twenty twenty-one. Currently, I've, um, processed sixteen new hires this year and we've had fourteen terminations. Um, two of those, uh, or twelve of those were voluntary. Um, right now, as you've heard from staff, we have a variety of different, uh, places where we are in the hiring process for several. We have two that started this week. We have two that are starting next week. We have a lot that's in the testing, interview and the background process. Next page. So here's where I added a little more information. So what I've done is I did the Osage Beach on the left is the Osage Beach turnover rate with full-time positions only. Then that was what was in our book. And then I down below that, I did the voluntary turnover rate showing it dropped just a little bit when I pulled out and those are full-time and part-time positions that we did. I took out, this is just voluntary turnover rate. In the middle is Osage Beach turnover rate. Um, I, I went back. I just wanted to give it, get a, get a better snapshot of where we've been and do full and part-time positions. And they are, um, this is voluntary as well. No, this isn't. This is everything. And then the over to the right is where the national average is. So the national turnover rate for state and local government, and this is where it was for the last, um, three years and it's from the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics. If you go out there and you do a lot of research and everything, you're gonna find the industries vary a lot, but the end, public entity, um, turnover rate is one of the lowest that there, that is out there. But I just wanted to kinda look at these numbers. Obviously, we do have, um, some trends going that we need to look at and to identify. And I know, you know, twenty twenty was of course the year of COVID. I don't know if we can, um, identify things that are gonna be there, but we can also look like we just need to look at our onboarding processes. We don't do a very good job and I think we can really improve our, um, onboarding process. We need to expand it out for a six-month period. Onboarding should not just be human resources and getting you into payroll. Onboarding has to be something that is from the departments. It comes in from the departments. They do training. They've got to get these employees engaged fully. We need to have a better process in that. That is one of my goals. I'm hoping to, um, speak more of that as we're going into our staff meetings and get a lot of buy-in from the managers because they're the ones that are going to make this successful. The other thing is, um, communication. We need to make sure that we understand where our communication, where they have access to it, the employees, and they understand it. Um, we're gonna go down here in a little bit and I'm gonna show you our generation breakdown and you're gonna see that our generation breakdown is going to dictate that we've got to cover a variety of communication media. The other thing we need to look at is our culture, our department cultures and as well as the citywide culture. And we need to do that a variety of different ways. We can use employee surveys and our exit interview process. Okay, Gina. This is just a voluntary, uh, turnover by department. We kinda all know where we're going here. Public Works, that is up there because of our sewer. Uh, we've had a lot of sewer department, um, turnover. The PD department, I will tell you that, um, for, uh, twenty, for the sixty-nine percent in twenty twenty, three of those positions, they resigned. However, they were under investigation. So it could have maybe not been voluntary. We just hadn't finished it. But that's just a snapshot. I will email out this information to everybody when I'm finished. So you can have it. I wanted to talk about our current workforce. Um, the current workforce right now is current budgeted, full-time positions is ninety-seven. We currently have seventy-five positions filled. I have vacancies of twenty-two positions. Our voluntary terms are twelve, involuntary are two so far this year. Our length of service for twenty twenty-one is seven years and I didn't do it for twenty twenty, but I did it for twenty nineteen, um, and it was seven point four years. So, um, if you go to the right, this is my little snapshot of where we are on our generations. Um, you can tell where we are with, uh, Gen X and the millennials are really taking over the, uh, baby boomers, but the, uh, Gen Z is gonna be coming up. And boy, they're a little bit different. So we have managers as well as HR have to realize that the Gen X is your, you deal with a lot of, or the Gen Zs, you deal with a lot of parents. There's a variety of different things that you have to understand. They're different. They, I mean, I've met with mothers that are calling me for all kinds of things, um, before their kids even contact us to apply. So anyway, so it's a variety of things. We have to identify the needs of each one of these generations to make sure that we're trying to cover all of our bases because we understand our baby boomers as they start leaving, we are losing a lot of experience. We need to make sure that we're transferring that experience down to the other generations as well as to the newcomers. We're getting a lot of newcomers in here. So we need to make sure that we are taking care. We need to maybe define mentor programs and other types of training to make sure that we are not, that we take advantage of the individuals that will be retiring and going on. Okay, so lots of questions so far? All right, let's go to risk management. Okay, these are just our numbers currently that I have here for risk management for, uh, workers' compensation. So I will tell you that right now, we need to applaud ourselves. Workers' compensation is a point seven two. We are doing what we need to do, but we're not gonna stay there because we're not gonna get much lower than point seven two. What that means is that your average is a one. So anything at a one point ten or one point one, one point two, that ten percent, you're gonna get a surcharge to your invoice. When you're below one, you get a credit. So right now, we're getting a twenty-eight percent credit on our workers' comp insurance. So that's just, um, something that we do good. Right now, we're doing very well, but it just takes one bad accident. As you can tell, twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, that was just one major accident and it was no fault of the employee at that time. So, um, the processes, the information that we have out, the training, we just need to make sure that we keep that going to make sure that we can maintain this level. Property and liability claims. Um, what I did is I did provide when I sent out the information of what we filed through insurance. However, what I didn't provide is the overall, everything that we do, which has been myself and then April has been immensely helping me with that and we're training Abby as well. But these are the number of claims that we've been working with. Twenty eighteen, we had sixty-seven, twenty nineteen, seventy-six, twenty twenty, fifty-eight, twenty-one. We've had nineteen so far. These claims are claims that either fall under our deductible or they're claims that we are filing with other insurance companies because people have knocked out our streetlights, they've knocked out our, our signs, they've, it's auto ins, auto, it's just a variety of different things that we've had to handle. Also, we've had nine sewer liability claims since January of twenty twenty. Um, I wanna really, I know, we need to really talk about the sewer liability claims because they can be very costly. So ten thousand dollar deductible for that and unless we have maintenance programs in place in writing that they're followed and we can document it, then the city can be found liable. So this is huge because these are very costly. We've got several out there right now. One's in a big lawsuit. So we have several that are going to be coming through. Um, and I just wanna make sure Kevin, I've talked to Kevin. Kevin's doing a great job. He's identified some of the things that I'm gonna be talking about that we've needed to do. The identification of the lift stations, documentation, um, taking pictures, our follow-through, but putting maintenance programs in place has to be a priority. We've been reacting and we've gotta come back and do the, be proactive and do, focus on our We've been reacting, and we've got to come back and do the, be proactive and do, focus on our preventive, because we are seeing it on the risk management side. This is costly, not just because we are paying $10,000 or the damage that's under that, but also manpower to clean it up, to do it. And then our duty as environmentalist. I mean, it's our job to make sure that our sewer is taken care of, and it's not going in the environment. And right now, without our maintenance programs in place, we're at a risk there. So it's not just a money value, but it's also an environmentalist problem too. We really needed to be, do our due diligence and take that responsibility serious. Also, in risk management, we do internal investigations. They range from formal grievances to complaints of harassment and/or retaliation. This is just a list of some claims that we've had in the past. We have had a little increase, I did see an increase in formal complaints regarding a variety of different things in 2020 and some in 2021. So we're going to be reevaluating those, and again, processes that we put in place through exit interviews, conversations with employees. Hopefully, we'll have check-ins when we do our evaluations, that we can get a better, I don't know, a pulse of the employee during the year, instead of just meeting with them once a year on an evaluation, and then as well as employee surveys. On the horizon, so I have a variety of different things that are going on in place. As we all know, human resources and risk management is an ever-changing environment. So it's, there's a lot of different things. Medical marijuana in the workplace and its impact on pre-employment drug screening. Medical marijuana in the workplace is with us. So what I would like to do is for us to identify what we want to do as a city and move forward. We're, I don't want to be reactive, I want to have a plan in place, and I want to have guidance on that. So I'm going to be bringing some information to everybody at the end of the year. This is one of the first things I want to deal with and get that. I'll be working with Dr. Abbott, she's our medical review officer, and get some feedback from her. But this is something that we need to identify, because it is with us right now. The other thing is employee development. It's going to go, that's going to help us with our retention and decrease our turnover, as well as employee recognition program. With employee development, we, that new hire onboarding process is essential. We've got to put something in place. Mid-evaluation, check-ins by managers, leveraging our one-on-one meetings with everybody. We need to make it, have, make sure we have our relationships with our employees. The 360 evaluation process, so we can get a better understanding of not just how the supervisor feels. We did include self-rating this year, so that was the first part of putting in the 360 evaluation. So next year, or this year, I'd like to go ahead, when we do it, and we're going to do the peer evaluations included, as be the 360. Supervisor, self, and peers. Also, we do utilize learning, we have a new learning management software. NeoGov has been a very great purchase, or joining, or whatever we've done. We have very different things we've taken in. NeoGov is where we have been taking our applications, they're all electronic now. Then we've moved to, and our onboarding for payroll is electronic now. Then our performance evaluation process is electronic, and now learning, the LMS, the learning management system, Angel and I will be, she's finished it, hopefully get that out to learning plans for the different departments, for them to have different trainings and everything available. It's where a place where we put our certifications, our classroom, online, all types of training. It's one, one thing, everybody goes there, one portfolio, profile for you, the employee, and they have access to it, and they know where they are. So I'm also finishing up the implementation of e-forms. E-forms is electronic forms for all of my payroll, HR things. I can put that in there, it's going to be automatically, get signatures, it'll be a thing, and then it will notify me or Abby when something needs to be adjusted for payroll. So that'll be implemented by, I think, August 1st will be my, is my completion date. Employee recognition program, we just need to identify some things that we can improve our recognition. We just had a major leadership training that focused on employee recognition. So hopefully, we're understanding the importance of that throughout the city. An employee survey, I'd really like to recommend that we consider going on an outside contractor. And also, continued focus on the paperless environment. I talked about NeoGov. This is something that, with risk management, I have brought it up later on too, but when we have a claim and I, we can't find the documentation, there's a problem. That we, it didn't happen. We, I mean, if we say we did it, and we don't have the documentation, we don't have it. The problem is, is if it's not electronic, or we have to go find it, we need to move everything electronically. I know we are, but we need to understand the importance of getting it all there, even documents from the history. The other thing is, is that it needs to be consistent. So what Kevin was going back there for, again, when we're doing identification on the lift stations, it's a must. We had a sewer claim, but the individuals in the sewer department, if one guy went out there and they worked on the sewer line, there's this address, and there's this address. Some people might use this address, some of the employees might use this address. The actual lines themselves, they need to be identified. They have to be consistent. If we don't have consistency in our systems, then it's useless for us. So we have had problems with that on following up with our claims and providing the information that the different attorneys or the claims adjusters have needed. A leave policy, a workplace flexibility, those are things that I would like to bring forward either at the end of this year or early next year. Public Works integration is another thing that I think that we need to look at. Mike and I were doing, working on this before, but Kevin and I have talked about it, we're going to look a bit more. It's basically a thought process, is our sewer has had a lot of turnover. One of the things through the exit interviews with the turnover was because the on-call. The on-call for sewer can be very, I think, overwhelming for individuals. So it's been suggested that maybe we bring in, and make a date, and say, we develop new job descriptions, and all of our new hires are, understand that they will be part of the backup on-call for sewer, so we can expand the pool for our backup for on-call sewer. Each, each department will still be specialized in their departments. They have, still have specialty in water, sewer, and transportation, but they would all have, be able to back up in all the different departments. That also provides them with increased skills for water and transportation, so it will increase their pay. We're not going to make it mandatory for current employees, but if they do want to participate, we will incentivize them to make sure that they, to make sure that they are getting what they need to help us do this. So it's just a project that's, it's in infancy right now, but hopefully, we'll be moving forward, and we can see something by the first of the year. Exit interview policy and process, I'd like to discuss that later on. I also need to work with Carrie Bell, and hopefully, we'll do a retirement provider review. It's been a while since we've done that. Also, a supplemental benefit project, provider review as well. Challenges for human resources and risk management. Right now, my biggest challenge is keeping up with the strategic planning for the HR and risk management, and training, as well as doing all the day-to-day activities and duties for it. Citywide recruitment, the background process, and then the lack of documentation for claims. It should be consistent, easily accessible, accurate. The other thing that I didn't put on there, that I think that we need to watch, be careful for, I've talked to Gina about this, is our pay plan compression. We've got lots of talk about, I mean, a lot of people are raising their minimum rates and things, and paying different people, the minimums go up, you've got your people that's in your pay plan levels, and then so you're compressing it. So we're, we need to make sure that we're doing our due diligence, and work with our C biz as our pay plan consultant, to make sure that we're aware of what's going to be happening the next year or two on that. What will help HR and risk management? I really, at this point in time, is really considering having, asking for an addition to a dedicated HR person. Right now, I work very, I mean, April has been absolutely wonderful, but her duties have really increased with all the changes. So Abby's starting to take over that, Abby is doing some of my benefit administration as well. I have been heavily relying on Pam, the Department Secretary for Building and Planning. She's been handling all of my pre-employment testing right now for 911 in the Police Department. And then I also have the administrative assistant for the city administrators helping me with the learn program and all the training for all the employees. And then the Department Secretary for PD was helping me do, and unfortunately, the chief had to do it this last time, is all the scheduling and everything for the positions. I just, I run out of time at the end of the day. And we, we must continue our focus on safety and wellness. That helps us keep our health insurance rates down, and it also keeps our workers' comp rate down. And then, of course, and most important, is the continued support from members of the board and the management team.
Is there any questions?
I apologize, but I have to leave, I'm sorry.
After having to do those scheduling and everything for the interviews, it was to be kind of respectful of what somebody else is doing.
So do mine, I'm used to it.
I don't know if you have.
How many was the exit interview process? Or later, you said later, I don't know, discussing how, or we can do it later.
Whatever's convenient for you guys, I didn't, I didn't know if I was running out of time, I don't know. It's whatever you guys want to do.
The issue that I have, that I run into, and it's not Cindy's fault, she just doesn't have time. I have just getting to the timely option, because it's a very manual process. And my suggestion was Cindy.
When you said you could tell me before you do them, I'm sorry.
Yeah, like I.
Yeah, I've got to get, yep.
I'm behind, I'll just get in those, because it's a manual process for Cindy. So my suggestion was a kind of electronic method, but it's secure in between the employee and computer. Or, you know, in some way, it is, you know, easier on Cindy to, you know, because normally, the process is just there. And it's just, you know, she don't have time, and it's just not often the top of her list. And so, as we've had turnovers, like all the last 12, you know.
I just need to.
It needs to be a process that is not as bad for her, but also is convenient for employees in a secure way that they can, and professionals.
Right, and that's one of the reasons I brought that up, is because it is manual. I, I'm not sure that going to a computer exit interview process is good, because there is a lot of discussion when employees leave. If they say, make a comment, I can ask for more detail on that comment and things. So some of the exit interviews can be an hour or longer. My problem is, is right now, I've just been writing all my notes, and I, I can copy and just scan them to them, I'm afraid they won't do it, so I need to type them, but, and I did type the one, but, so that's the delay there.
So we can't really, if I don't, you know, if I don't get them, it's kind of, you, so they're, they're just, there's got to be a little faster, one time, however, I was sending them along, it's not important, it's not going to cross. So my suggestion to her.
There's a lot of value in that, because one of the questions I have is, you know, is why are we those employees? Why is it a little bit higher than the average, you know, a whole lot more than what's seen with the average? But those exit interviews can, not always, but I realize they're, I've been, I've, so I, and I realize some of them, but they, there are, there are a lot of them that can be valuable. And I think by doing that in person, is much easier to make sure if they are valuable or not.
Right.
So standard, I should have reviewed time, and part for me is part of the day operations, because once and once again, in my sense, she just has a lot of money, just makes a, maybe.
So I don't know the solution either, Cindy.
And they got, basically, the safety of the workplace, you know, possibly need to, you think, looking at having a full-time assistant for that department, so having all these responsibilities shifted around and retraining, retrainings, assistants, and whatever, so, you know, that's, that's another consideration for the budget process. Besides, there's so many different things that go on, over on HR. I mean, this is something we've talked about for a couple of years, you know, you know. So many projects to, 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 so.
That's special. Well, the challenge I give you is, maybe it's not to hire somebody else, but maybe to take some of the responsibilities and shift it to somebody else who can handle. And I'm not saying that, I don't have the true, I'm just saying there.
I trust you, Cindy, you're a tough guy, every year. And I mean, I will tell, I know Cindy really good, all the buckets she does, truly it, and so she's quick at it. And so given up some of that stuff, I know is hard, but the last couple of years, what she said, between my administrative assistant, whoever that would have been over the last, you know, several years, the staff account coach, Cindy, and then Carrie's department, and you know, just in general. There is a lot that, three years ago, Cindy did all that has been pushed, but because of all the departments just growing and needing other things, I think we have mapped some of that out of, just be more, that's more of a lesson. And that's kind of the summary, I was, you know, it's done, I'll come back to that, because most departments will kind of all that.
And some of those, you know, you can, you say you can shift, but some of that needs to stay under the HR umbrella. Okay, for, for whatever reason. And thereby adding, you know, an additional portion for risk management, just, you know, risk management is a critical aspect of HR, the impact it has, you know, on the operations of our city, the costs associated, you know, with our city, so, you know, can you move some of that, or I thought you did it in another group? Sure, but really, it's, I believe, it's important, we have to, we have to take a look at that, you know. Like, those are the kinds of things that I think, you know, we ought to be looking at, considering. I'll keep out, we can do some of that, you know, in our strategic planning, we shifted several things to that. But, you know, certainly, you know, part of what we're going to be doing, that, there in the process, is taking a look at, you know, some of the additional revenue funds, you know, coming in. We've basically reduced our forces over the years, because we have seen windmill, you know, revenue as some dollars have shifted to, you know, to online sales and so on and so forth. So, you know, there's, you know, different opportunities for revenue streams. But some of the revenue that's come in, I think, I shared with you all, what the June sales tax revenue was, and significantly up over last year, can't expect that every year, but, you know, we've seen a nice upturn in that. So, you know, there's a possibility now of making a look at some of those areas maybe where we have downshifted, because we didn't have incoming, you know, revenue, you know, to now take a look at, you know, where we need to leave up to, you know, get us where we need to be. Or look at other options like magnetization, or additional magnetization, or so on and so forth. But, you know, this is critical time for us right now. Plus, we also have some other opportunities to take a look at, as we get into this strategic planning session, as, as far as the American, the American rescue flight, and the dollars that are associated with that, and some of the funds that we'll have available to implement as far as, at least right now, you know, water and sewer. And there are some other programs we can shift that to, but specifically, we're assuming that they have, you know, for that. So, it's going to be, it's going to be a full presentation, yes, Richard.
So I want to raise back an instant, Charlie. As I look at PLOU, first of all, I applaud all the hard views we're involved in, I hope that I have a response on that. I remember three years, about three years ago, a discussion about where the modification pod, or pod, or word, I call it, was going towards, on to now, that's right, appreciate all that, it saves us money, and apparently make you healthier and safer. It's a big work. But when we look at what's going on here, we have provided additional benefits to the retirement, we provide additional salary, we have provided additional, just to Cindy, the holidays, and our turnover rates are going to be absolutely wrong. My belief is, we're not focusing on that stuff. As much as, I appreciate all, all the presentations here, very little of any was there any challenges around building capability of people, recognition, improving cultures. And I think that's the biggest opportunity to study that right now. We, people are our greatest assets, most valuable assets, and I would challenge each and every one. valuable assets. And I would challenge each and every one of you to realize that a recognition program to improve this culture is the responsibility of you all. And it almost looks like it's Cindy's job, as I said in Washington, D.C., right? And so, that doesn't surprise me, that 's not unique to other, to this organization compared to other organizations, but it's all ours. If anything, it's your, our jobs, and it's Cindy's job. Cindy's job's the only tool you can use it. And I will just say this, that everybody comes to exit interviews, I think the worst of that to do is to deep, because we don't understand what's going on. And I perfectly, I don't know what you meant by process, but I perfectly support and almost suggest that we start seeing some of those, for recent ones, the last six months to be here, because we have put up a lot of energy and resources towards trying to change, to make sure that the people are recognized as our biggest assets, and it's not reducing. If anything, we're doing part of the behind, so also on that you got it. And all these things that we might have had, and I haven't been doing, but we may have. And so, Richard, my concern is.
I'd like to say I have very similar concerns as Richard. The most alarming data I saw was, in theory, I pray for best among our employees here, but in theory, our Cindy's, Cindy employees turnover every three years. We have, we have right new group of seventy-five employees every three years. That's, that's very alarming, very alarming. How do you keep any, how do you pass on, like public work, just once the old timers pass on their knowledge? How do you do that? I mean, and that goes with every department we have.
I have a solution, but I, Richard, I think, I think HR is probably as big a problem as we have with roads and sewer. HR is probably one of our bigger problems that Cindy has, in my opinion.
I'd like to say.
Sorry. I was gonna say, I do have a solution, and it doesn't go back to Cindy. It goes back to all the different department managers, because we have thrown all these solutions to try to increase employee retention, fill vacant positions, et cetera, by, like you said, all these different programs, bonuses, increasing salaries, et cetera, et cetera. Obviously, we are throwing solutions at the problem without identifying what is the real problem. And it's gonna go back to what Richard said, it's the culture. A lot of that is evident, and we're in a 22% vacancy rate of employment right now. If you look at these data here, and you see our average employee score, that alarms me, it's a 2.9, is that correct? That seems awfully scary to believe that half our employees are falling under what we consider acceptable. But, but is that the employee, or is that the manager's supervisor idea, what they should be doing versus what they actually were being hired to do? You understand? So there's, this obviously is a lot more discussion needs to happen. But if you look at our stats, you think, we as a board have thought, okay, here's where we need to fix the problem, and here's how we can. But obviously, that solution is not happening, when we look at the numbers today. So we've got to come up with a better plan on how we can basically get all the different departments involved, and getting new employees, heating those employees, creating a culture that's gonna make them stay greater than the three-year average, et cetera. So anyway, that was, you said we don't have a solution, well, we do have a solution. So.
It's a super complicated question, and there is a really complicated answer. When you're talking about retention, there's a bunch of things you need to consider when you say culture. Because in public works, if they're not being provided the tools they're asking for, or buildings that are nice to work in, equipment that's acceptable to drive, and support as far as software, and all the other local tools, the tools they need in 2021 to do their jobs, I can tell you from their point of view, part of my friends will go, well, this is a bullshit organization. That's what this is. They want you to do this job, they're setting it for failure, they don't give you the tools I need, there's trucks and PSS, and I'm going into a building that I rapidly live into. I want you people here to understand that when you make budgetary decisions, you need to keep this in mind too, because that is all part and parcel to retention. These things, these budgetary decisions, you may have unintended consequences, and one of them is retention. So I just have that in the mix, for your consideration too.
Quite frankly, there's a massive demand for workforce everywhere. And they don't have to stay.
They can pick and choose.
They can pick and choose, and they do.
And they can, they will. So what you need to do is create a environment they want to be in, because they have choices. They have all kinds of choices. Everyone's tired right now. Everyone's tired right now. So it's like, they're shopping, right? They're shopping lots. And if they don't like what they see, they're six month, one year, it's the, it's that easy. So, and.
A lot of people that exit interviews will demonstrate that's wrong.
Absolutely.
It was because they needed a new truck, the truck knew their job, but they could drive a 20-year-old truck to work, to turn the truck around, buy a person.
Yep.
So, at the end of the day, we have to figure out what the real good is, okay? Because I'm not convinced that just because we're not buying new trucks, or, you know, I don't think, surely they have the right hammer and the right drill, okay? But that makes it some tremendous difference, okay? And so, but, you know, we, we already had 12 voluntary terminations of students, okay? Two to three a month, depending on how, when that number was actually adopted, okay? There's, there's, there's information in those exit interviews that'll, that'll get us on the right thing. We've had employee surf, I don't know, we'll see what it says, okay? Or I think that's the goal, is to be on by the end of the year. The last one we did was in 2018, and those teams were, became more magnified from the previous teams that were in 2015 or 16, or four weeks after. Okay? But if those teams are not changing, we got to.
I know this is not the time to write a book going in great detail, because I'm at retreat that night, I disagree with Richard. I worked for an organization predominantly most of my career that provided me the tools. You do not work for an organization that provides you the place to sleep, the place to live, the tools, the tools to drive, the tools to do your job. If, if you don't understand what's going on, you don't have those tools. And you have tools that are not up to date. And you have tools that are, that are old, and you don't feel are viable. That is part of retention. And I believe that plays a very big part. I've had the pleasure and the misfortune, working for a whole type of organization, I believe. Those providing you with the tools, I would much more please, I would much more apt to not leave sadly.
I don't disagree. I don't, I don't, this part of it.
This board does get involved with the problem that we have of retention.
This board is challenged with the fact that we have previous debts, and we don't have our reserves in a place that we've expected them to be. So, you know, at the end of the day, the challenge is, is that it can be nice to have, like, driving, world forces that have both long streets, but they're not, we don't have it. Okay? And so, we do have to pick and choose. And honestly, I don't think the board should pick and choose. If you need to say, this is how much money you got, and you got to figure out what's the best for the place. But we'll have to disagree, disagree. I do believe we have that, so, but they have to function. That's the magic, we ought to be right in China.
Well, we admitted this conversation, this is probably not the place to do this strategic planning session is. But, you know, we made some decisions over the last couple of years. We changed the duration of different things. And, you know, the question is, what is the impact of that? Is it something we can do on, or we accelerate certain things we have in the past, you know, and issues reduced, availability of certain products, and so on and so forth. Those are going to be in those discussions for a later time, not career. Okay? So if we don't mind, can we go ahead and move on? I think, let's see, yes, yeah.
So if, I don't know if this will help or not, but if I did aggregate the exit interviews starting January 1 of 2020, being that there was a question that's asked, and here's the right, they didn't answer, that way it doesn't identify the individual that left, but it could identify the department they were having from. That beneficial, it doesn't tell you any, you know, anything, but it is, there's the question, you hear the responses to that.
I think anything you can provide us that tells us what the employees have left, why we have reason why we think they left. That's not, that, we need, I mean, we, we have those, we have those thoughts, but I, what's valuable to us is that we can understand why they left, and how we.
And there's another thing too, that might, might be, would be, you know, whether or not these are rapid terminators, with these stroke sets, have we been to this for a short period of time? You know, set of parameters, one year, or above, or six years, six months or below. So that would give you some, that, that kind of.
I can give you a turnover, maybe if they went there less than a year as well.
Just.
The other thing I could do is, I can actually give you like, for instance, this is how many terms that we had during this time period, and I can just give you like a category of what they told you that they left for. So you can see a snapshot there, as well as however, like, they moved out of area, they took their job.
Sure.
I can do that.
Are exit interviews shared with the department heads?
Yeah.
Why not?
Because, and as I said, I might be really, really valued in that. We had a problem before, I mean, I figured we didn't need to talk. So I had to do it, this is a confidential process, nobody would look at them, city administrator would look at them, and just know if your department will not look at them, because nobody would talk. So, I mean, I had to sign something, this is confidential, and they signed it too. So, now, I'm getting away from that, and people are talking to me more, and stuff, in the last several years, you know. But it was a big problem, we had to make sure that the process was really confidential down at the same time. We have turned that corner. Still, there are people, people not taking us there. They will not actually question that comment too.
Those usually the scruntile employees.
So, so they, you know, they go to the client, and say, you know, they'll tell me a little bit, they're not, they don't want to communicate. So, but anyways, so I only, those ones, Gina, so she, but I just went aggregate to, so people do not know who they are.
Absolutely. I think that's, that's what we need to be looking at right now, some people, to establish sort of how trends.
And they turn over for less than a year, they can well, they're.
Awesome. Yeah. We can talk about the value that we can make representation here. Sit down. Okay, let's move on. Ed, I hate to say you're not last, because.
What's I?
We said, I would say you're. But you're saying you're the last, we're almost there.
All right, I don't, I don't get. Is this on? Is this on? Okay. I, I don't get a closing argument, but I get the second to last argument. So in terms of budget pre-planning, there's not a lot to talk about for the law business. And so, I, I will just go over a little bit, a couple of things. One is my role in the life of the city, and then two, basically what the daily pace of business looks like, at least from what I do, okay? And, and the first thing is, I represent the mayor, the members of the Board of Alderman. I don't represent the city, it's not some amorphous entity. I don't represent the staff, okay? I represent the Board of Alderman, when it sits as a group, and the mayor, okay? The mayor runs the show, period, okay? The seven members of the elected officials, when they sit as, as, as the board in the meeting, set policy and tell us what to do. I work for the city administrator when you guys aren't here, okay? That's my primary focus and, and part of conduct. I have been fortunate, and, and, and the quality of my coworkers, and the management team especially, that they trust me enough that they'll just talk to me directly, and I can, I can sometimes often help them with a problem just directly, because that's what they do. Let's talk a little bit about the role in terms of confidentiality, okay? Every, and this is basic legal ethics 101. Every scrap of information I have belongs to the elected officials, okay? I am their agent, I do not have the ability nor the right to withhold information from them, okay? I can't do what a specific board member asks me to do. In other words, you don't take a position on a lawsuit, or do something like that, because the board only speaks as, as a whole. But it's not confidential, it's our, it's your information, okay? I have a specific professional responsibility, next slide, okay? And that is, I stay out of the policy fights, okay? I'm supposed to be the guardian of the process. The, the process of democracy is what I'm supposed to be passionate about. How you get the result is my job, okay? What the result is, is your job. And it's, and it's up to me to stay out of your business, in terms of whether or not you want to permit Gary Pruitt to do the amphitheater. I'm interested is how it can be about how we get to that decision. That decision has to be made by the public's elected representatives in the process that's set out. But in terms of the yes or no, I may have a personal, personal opinion about it, but you know, it doesn't go any further than a BS conversation between me and some coworker. My obligation is to make sure the process gets observed, so the community can go ahead and, and do what it feels like doing. Okay? I'm also only the family doctor. I am not a heart surgeon, okay? We have Matt Gist at Enz and Jester, that, that, Hex and Cindy and I have talked to him this week about employment. And, and we, we, we don't tell him all the time, but what we do is, when we do something, we oftentimes just say, we just want a second opinion, and, and our insurance pays for that. Obviously, on economic development, we go to Gilmore Bell, okay? And, and we go to Gilmore Bell when we need him, and we just call him up. They, they've been very responsive to us over the years. Okay? What my role is, I've told you what my role isn't for a while, so this is what my role is, okay? I am to drive this process forward to make sure the city is open, accountable, and transparent. I want to, and, and this goes for, for all my coworkers, as well as my elected officials, drive this point home again. Government is supposed to be first, open, accountable, and transparent, and second, efficient, okay? We are not a private business. Private businesses don't have an open records law where they have to, to, to report that. Private businesses don't spend money that they don't earn freely. We spend money that we take from other people, because they got to give it to us, okay? Those are called taxes. So we have a different obligation there, okay? And then we try to observe the rule of law. That, that's basically the notice, you know, that, now, I've done these slides, because I want to talk to you a little bit about the most expensive thing you spend in the legal department, aside from salary, that's the most important thing that you don't actually see very often. And that is the Westlaw subscription. And the best way to describe why we have a Westlaw subscription is to tell you this most embarrassing story I can come up with, when I was county counselor. In Jackson County, when I was county counselor, the county loved to play games with the governor, because there was the Jackson County Sports Complex Authority, which has a suite at Arrowhead Stadium. And the people appointed to that authority got to go there and watch games in the suite, and be just as highfalutin as they could, and it cost them nothing, okay? So, they'd go, they'd go there and watch the games. Well, if the governor and the leg, and the county got separated, they'd have these little tiffs about whether or not who got to be on the Jackson County Sports Complex Authority. And one of the things that would routinely happen is, for a democratic county, they would not submit a slate of names to a Republican governor, okay? So the legislature finally got tired of this, and they put in the following sentence at the bottom. No commissioner shall continue to serve beyond the expiration of that commissioner's term. Well, this caused a giant blow up. And of course, then, I was asked for legal opinions, and I got on LexisNexis, which was the service we had, and I said, well, you know, no commissioner can serve beyond the term, so you can't. Next slide, please. Boy, did I get my head handed to me. Henry Rizzo, one of my county legislators, showed up in my office one day and said, are you sure about this? And I said, that's what the law says, I ran it on the computer, here's the, here's the printout. He said, well, here's a printout from Westlaw. And it had the same statute you saw on the earlier page, cross-referenced against this provision of the Missouri Constitution that says that subject to the right of resignation, an officer holds office until the successors are duly elected, appointed, or qualified. Now, that makes legislative sense when you think about it, because if you didn't hold over, you could literally shut down the University of Missouri by saying, I'm mad at University of Missouri, the curator's terms have expired, there's no curators, there's no university, okay? That's why we do Westlaw, folks, because when, when, when that, when that happened to me, we had 12 Lexus licenses, I reduced that number to 10, and went and got a Westlaw license, just so we could double-check our stuff. And that's the way it has to go. What I do, what I do today, next slide, kid, you know, you guys decide what street we pave. What I do is make sure that the competitive bidding process works, that we pay prevailing wage, that we have basic job site safety, if it gets to the point it's a legal issue, and we've all been through that one in the last couple of years. Fair employment practices for our city, getting the easements, those are the kind of issues that show up on my desk. Westlaw becomes enormously helpful in, in, in things like writing letters back to lawyers who will send us demand letters saying, there's stormwater rolling into my client's yard, okay? And it takes a little work to write that letter back. And it takes a little work to write that letter back, but the answer is, well, one, do you agree that Missouri is a modified common enemy doctrine as to water runoff? And, two, how are you going to get past sovereign immunity? Frankly, we wrote, we sent that letter about a year and a half ago, and haven't heard from anybody. Uh, the last thing, just for what it's worth, you, you guys have been here a long time, and you're patient, and I've only lost one audience member so far, um, is to tell you that, that the law constantly changes, and new and different stuff happens every day, and today, in court, in trial, I had something that has never happened to me, and I've been doing this for forty-five years. Today, in the middle of trial, while Officer Chapman, one of my better officers and one of my best witnesses, chief, he does an excellent job, was on the stand testifying, I finished this, he's the second witness of three on a trespass case, I finished with Officer Chapman sat down, defendant commenced his cross-examination, and within the next ten minutes, the defendant said, "Well, okay, yes, you're right, I think I'm guilty," and we were done. Now, I've had cases, compromises settle in the middle of trial, I've had cases go to pot, I have never had a defendant outright surrender in the middle of his own cross-examination. So that's why this job is always interesting. Aside from that, I really don't have a lot on, a lot on the budget, except that's why I need West Law. Questions? Brig bats? Suggestions? Yo?
What is the process that we are doing, um, and I, I feel you're the one who has carried the torch and passed it all, we're managing, but what is the process that you are doing to make sure that we are constantly up to date on the statutes that are being changed, I've been jettiesing, some good, some not so good, regulations, both federal and state, um, and, and regulatory issues and things, so that we are, so that we do not have ordinances that are out of date?
The, it's a, a, as you describe it, it's a multi-pronged question, it's a multi-pronged answer, too. First, for West Law, what I have is a standard case-tracking system, in other words, the, 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 you're, you're, we went through, you'll recall, Alderman, Rucker, we had the discussion about how we handle signs, okay? Well, that's, um, Gilbert versus Reed out of Arizona. I have an alert against Gilbert versus Reed in the West Law system that throws me up a weekly summary of, these are the cases where this case has been mentioned. Ninety-nine percent of that stuff is, it's mentioned in some district court opinion somewhere, or it's mentioned in some appellate brief somewhere, okay? If I see it mentioned in an Eighth Circuit Court of Appeals opinion, which is where we live, well, yeah, I'll read it. So we have alerts that are set up in West Law. We have Missouri Municipal League's yearly report, which is critical to what we do, and Missouri Municipal League does an excellent job following up on, on those kinds of things. Um, and then we just sort of keep a weather eye out. I'm frankly, there's, there's, you can't effectively track everything without subscribing to a number of different sources and services. Because we're a state government arm, we're not necessarily affected directly by so much of the federal legislation, as you might think. It doesn't change the way we do business. It does affect us in terms of the way we're, we're stuck with it. For instance, the chief is, is, is the recipient of federal funds, so he is, in fact, subject to the Federal Hatch Act, okay? Now, we're not, there's, there's not a state hatch act that's, that applies to him, but federal funds follow that, that's the kind of stuff, you know, and that's frankly what you get when you hire an older lawyer, too. They've already got my teeth kicked in on that one once. But we, we track alerts in West Law, we track the, the standard, um, every one of the lawyers I know, I read an article called "The Flag" in the Journal of Missouri Bar, which arrived today, that Dudley McCarter writes out of Jefferson City, "Summerizing what the court's been deciding." Um, and so you, you track that. And there, there are other services. Oftentimes, though, with this staff, they're my subject matter experts, and, and, and one of the ways that, that legal questions get answered here is, I have to start with the premise that, given a question about planning or codes, okay, that Carrie or Ron is the subject matter expert I start with. Yeah, I may have to do a bunch of extra homework on it, but when you talk about currency, they're often the ones talking to me about, hey, this changed. Anybody else?
Yeah, and also, MML, state legislature changes, you know, is very, very good at, at, you know, letting us know what those changes are, and what we need to be looking at, and taking information. Ed, uh, Gina, you know, as we monitor that, it possibly may represent a MML, the MML forward. But we take a look at that, we have to call, we, we look at that in the department heads, to make sure that whatever changes change in the board, you know?
There's one other thing I forgot to mention, and, and that, that actually applies to what happened today. Um, I'm also a member of a group through Missouri Municipal League called the Missouri Municipal Attorneys Association, okay? And that constantly has some updates concerning ongoing litigation that's of interest to all of us, and this week, well, maybe it was, no, I think it was last week, but this was the first day we've had it in our court, um, the Missouri Supreme Court declared a three-dollar court cost fee that had been imposed upon municipal court defendants for the benefit of county sheriffs, and county sheriffs never have anything to do with municipal court, finally declared that illegal. And so today, in court, we weren't collecting it, okay? It's gonna be a bit of administrative pain in the neck for our finance people and for, for Annie, our court clerk, to figure out how we're gonna handle this. Uh, we don't know whether we have to give any money back or not, basically, all the money we, we have collected, we send up once a month to, to, to the court. But that's another way that we catch up on stuff and we see it. So, you know, I saw that, the, literally Frank Vatter, out the lawyer that handled the litigation, um, when he got the appellate opinion, just put out a little nugget on the list served that popped up, and, and, you know, once you've sorted through the twenty-five congratulatory messages he got from it, you found out there was the opinion, and yes, that fee was removed, and so Gary did not collect that fee today.
So, I have a few things that the board may want to get to at more granular level at the July meeting. Um, over the next week or so, think of things as the board, because when I do get back, by the end of the month, we'll be working on the agenda. So as you digest all this, want to narrow down to some more topics, um, I'll reach out to the board members to be able to do that. I also noted some themes, um, I, I met with each of the management team, but I did not know the details, that was between them and what they were gonna present, so it was interesting to see some of the very similar themes on challenges, um, you know, technology, e-services, staffing, and asset replacement and expansion, you know? It, and I will tell you, I, I, these are all solutions, these are all things that need solutions, but over the last five years, and I know this is, we've had different board members and stuff, but as we have just permanently decreased staff, or not even, as people come and go and leave, we have also added more training, more expectations in our managers, and so that is kind of part of the whole process. So I think we are getting to a point where some staffing, you know, will need to come back, at what level and how fast, that's what the board will have to determine on the funding that we can fund, but it all adds to the story. And I will just say that I know Ron's department can answer for this, I know Chi's department can answer this, but, um, even with the changes in Public Works over the last two years, has taken Mike totally out of my office. So therefore, I have totally had to make up for what Mike was doing for myself, and plus Angel had to make up, which means Angel had to push back on things she did for Cindy, so it all bottlenecks, and it all's a river, that all has not just happened overnight, and just with all these changes, so they all, they all add up, so...
I'm going back and forth.
I know, and now I've got an opening, so I'll have a new employee, too. So I, you know, my office, I mean, just with COVID, and then you threw COVID in the midst of everything, I mean, it, we've, we've, a lot of different things added to this, there's not just one problem or one thing solving these things, it is all a combination. So I've kind of noted themes, um, again, the board, get back with me, we'll meet up the, or I'll email you by the end of the month, so we can narrow down exactly what we kind of want to talk about in July, and move that from the budget. So hopefully, we'll also have more update on the dollars for the recovery money and some other things, so that is all I have. Let me know if you have further questions, I'll get some of these slide shows out to you all for more information as well.
And I'd just like to say, I appreciate everybody being here tonight. This is an edge that we couldn't, but I think in the long run, it's going to be a great asset for this edge that we're built, we've built. So I appreciate all of your current time, appreciate your time, and now you can talk specifically to the presenters, and thank you all very much, I really appreciate it. Our meeting was out of place, and evening out is concluded, and we will turn back to everyone.[1787.12]